Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call this meeting together, regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors. Today is October the 5th. And can we verify, Madam Clerk, that we have Supervisor Johnson on the telephone?
Supervisor Johnson?
President.
Okay, thank you very much. And this morning, we'll begin with the invocation that's going to be led by Reverend Griff Faudier, and we certainly welcome him back to join us, to give us this invocation. And that'll be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you for the privilege. Let us pray. God of all glory and Lord of all life, we come before you this morning in faith believing that you will grant our supervisors your wisdom, supervision, and discernment throughout the process of this meeting. We lift before you the elected leadership of Mojave County, who are invested with the authority, administrative power, and vision to develop this region's future. Theirs is both the privilege and the responsibility to govern this territory and its people. We humbly ask that you equip them to face the challenges and changes necessary to benefit our citizenry. We give you all our praise, thanksgiving, and glory for your divine grace and guidance, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The Board of Supervisors may by motion recess into executive session to receive legal advice from the county's attorney on any item contained within this agenda pursuant to ARS 3843103, A3, and 4. I'll entertain a motion at this time to call for an executive session to be held on October 19, 2020, at 9:00 a.m. for discussion and consultation with legal counsel in accordance with ARS 3843103, A3, and 4, to discuss items noticed on the agenda with an asterisk.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. I'll entertain a motion and action to approve the waiving of reading and full of items presented for discussion, adoption, or approval at this meeting. So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the official business to come before the board this morning. First off, we have a discussion of pending or contemplated litigation claims and demands. Do we have anything, Attorney Espin?
Nothing to report today. Thank you.
Okay. Next item is committee and/or legislative reports. We'll start with Supervisor Johnson.
Nothing, Madam Chair.
Okay, Supervisor Gold?
None today, Madam Chairman.
Supervisor Angus?
Nothing today.
Supervisor Watson?
Thank you, Chairman Bishop. Just want to remind you that there are going to be several resolutions coming before this body against the Queen Creek transfer of fourth priority Colorado River water. And also a reminder that on October 19th, we will have a joint meeting with the City of Kingman to get a firsthand report on the USGS model for the Walupi aquifer. Those items are coming up. They're very important to Mojave County and to the City of Kingman. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And since you brought that up, I'll make notification that I attended along with Supervisor Watson several Zoom meetings regarding water issues with the Mojave County Water Authority and the river communities, and these were items of discussion. I also attended a webinar for understanding Arizona groundwater, which is very informative and more on a basic level. On the state and federal level, I attended the County Supervisors Association Executive Teleconference, as well as the Board of Directors meeting, which was held by Zoom. And then also a Zoom meeting with the USGS. Also, we met with our representative on the borough situation, Ms. Susan McAlpine provided us with the report. And then locally, I attended, of course, WACOG and KAMA meetings and just normal business as usual. So we'll go on now to the County Manager's report with County Manager Sam Elters.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Board members. I would like to start, I'm sorry, by reminding you that Dave Wolfe, our former Director of Community Services, after serving the county for 30 wonderful years and leaving his fingerprints on that department and on the community, did retire. His last day was Friday, last Friday, October 2nd. We wanted, with the board approval and blessing, to hire somebody to fill that position and to have a bit of an overlap. And again, with the board concurrence, we were able to do so. We did hire Michael Smith to fill that position. He comes to us from Chicago, Illinois, with a lot of experience, and we're happy to have him. I wanted to give him a moment, he's in the audience, to step up and say hi to you, Board members, tell you a little bit about himself, so at least you know what he looks like, and when you see him, you'll recognize him. So with that, Michael.
And approaching the podium is Michael Smith.
His mask up, so we can recognize him.
That's right.
Exactly. Thank you, Sam, for that introduction. Madam Chair, Board Supervisors, it's my pleasure to humbly serve Mojave County. I look forward to learning more about Mojave County, the different community services that we have. My past experiences, I was the Director of Community Health Engagement at Roslyn Franklin University Health Clinics. That's a teaching institution. They had five colleges, which I worked with over the course of nine years, to integrate our program and community services. Some of the things that I really take pride in is our wraparound services and how we could expand that here and look at those services as well. Just to make sure when we do look at, and when we think of the community, one, we actually listen to the community. So we're listening, as opposed to give them mandates or how things should be done. So truly listen to the community and take that, and then try to say, all right, with that being said, how can we make a difference in the community? And then look at the needs of the individual. And when we look at the needs of individual, don't just look at it from the standpoint of one need, but how can we best serve them as a whole individual? And then with that being said, we can make a difference in their life and empower them to make their decisions and mandate how they want their lives to go. And with that, I'll close unless there's any further questions.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Smith. Do we have any questions from any of the board members? Any comments?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Madam Chair, I have a couple more items, if I may.
Yes, certainly.
The first one, and bear with me as I talk about rusting and piping and such. As you all know, steel rests in water, and many of the county buildings, including this very building where we meet, is heated and cooled by water flowing through steel piping system. As a result, and previously, many of these buildings experienced high corrosion in the pipes, and in fact, we had a big leak here at the admin building and the environmental health office in 2015. So our Public Works and Facilities Division, supported by many others who I would like to mention momentarily, installed a creative and innovative chemical injection system to mitigate those conditions. As a result, for three years now, the corrosion has been negligent, and what that means is it extends the life of those pieces of equipment, which are large and costly, reduces maintenance costs, and allows staff to predict when the maintenance is needed and budget for it. So John Meeting is the lead of the Facilities Group, and along with him, I'd like to mention from Public Works, Steve Lotowsky and Corinne Haster. From additional to John from Facility would be Keith Shelley, Dave Brackney, Jonathan Gravel, and Derek Bernier. From procurement, Michelle Fink. And from financial services, Judy Toledo and Sonia Harmio. I really wish I can communicate with you the importance of that step, and so for county employees to look for opportunities, to do things efficiently, in a cost-saving manner, and plan ahead is remarkable. And to that end, I just wanted you to know, and I wanted to recognize them additionally. And moving on, our procurement team was just received the 2020 Achievement of Excellence of Procurement Award. They have received it in the past, but it's an award that truly represents what it says, which is excellence in procurement. You do not earn it, given the criteria that you have to meet. You do not earn it unless you do a great job, and to that end, that's how they got there. So I wanted to also make you aware of that and recognize them. Last but not least, on the building front, our Kingman Library project is moving ahead. The completion is slated for next month, in November, and looking forward to completing that project. That concludes my report. Madam Chair, Board members, if you have any questions.
Supervisor Gold?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. County Manager Elters, we had no water treatment on the loop water in the HVAC system previous to this?
We did. It was not effective. It was not doing the job. And so we needed, as a result, we needed to come up with a newer, better, more innovative. And I didn't want to really get into the details, but I have that information.
I don't need the details. I was just concerned that we had no water treatment.
We did have, we did have some. It was inadequate. It was, it did not produce the results that we needed from it, and therefore corrosion was occurring at a higher rate than we wanted, and that's why we had the leak at the environmental health.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, County Manager. And I just want to know, I just wanted to say that I appreciate the way you are highlighting different employees, because we do have some very, very outstanding employees that go above and beyond, and just goes to show, as Mr. Hendricks always reminded us, we are a very exceptional county, and I'm proud to be part of that. Thank you very much. Congratulations to procurement again. We'll go on now. The next item is to approve the September 8, 2020 Board of Supervisors' Regular Meeting Minutes. Can I have a motion, please?
Second.
Have a motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. We'll now go on to the Call to the Public. The in-person Call to the Public portion of the Mojave County Supervisors' Meeting is allowed following social distancing and CDC guidelines. However, comments can also be submitted to the Clerk of the Board no later than 5:00 p.m. on Friday prior to the board meeting. Madam Clerk, do you have any written comments to read?
Madam Chair, no, I do not.
Okay, we do have a couple here this morning that would like to speak. Kate, or Kada's Manning from Kingman, she would like to speak about masks and bars. We do have an agenda item on that, Ms. Manning. If you'd like to wait and speak during that agenda item, it would probably be more meaningful at that time. Okay? So we'll hold off on that then. We have Ms. Royanne Ortiz from the Bullhead City area that'd like to speak about Proposition 207. Good morning, Royanne.
Good morning, Madam Chairman and members of the board.
You have three minutes.
I have three minutes to talk to you about Proposition 207.
Yes.
We have a bunch of yes signs running around all over our town, anyway. They probably are running around here. I'm not in favor of Proposition 207. There are people that think that that proposition is destined to pass. I'm not willing to give up that fast. So what I am doing is, I am purchasing, excuse me, purchasing a full-page ad in the Mojave Daily News, where I will list the reasons why people should vote no. And then used, using a technique that I used in Proposition 415 when we were trying to get it passed, I want to use it to try and get this defeated. So what I'm looking for is permission of any of you board members, including out there, if anybody's listening, school board members, any elected officials or any candidates, to contact me. And I thought everybody in the county knew my phone number, but maybe not, but I know Jenny does, and Hildy does. If I could get your permission to list your name, saying, "I will be voting no."
Royanne, just for the benefit of those watching, do you want to tell them what Prop 207 is?
Prop 207 is legalizing marijuana, and it'll be the worst thing that ever happened to this county. I mean, I can tell you that, because I have a few individual young men, one grandson, that he started out 15, at 15 years old, sneaking his mother's marijuana, and today he's a full-fledged heroin addict. And it's because the marijuana didn't give him the high that he wanted, so he kept graduating, went to meth, and then on to heroin. So this is a personal issue for me, to see to it that this is defeated because it's endangering our youth. And if anyone's ever talked to Colorado, their homeless population blossomed after legalizing marijuana, and we certainly don't need that in this county. So please contact me. I'd like to get that ad started today, and hopefully there are individuals that are willing to come forth and maybe put it in the newspaper here in Kingman and the one in Lake Havasu, to at least give a sufficient amount of votes out of Mojave County, and maybe some of the other counties will follow suit, so that we can overcome all the votes for yes. I know we're coming down in Maricopa, in the state of Maricopa. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes our Call to the Public.
Chairman, if I can just add, just to be clear, the statements that are made at the Call to the Public are their own personal statements of the people there. We do not censor or any of the contents or anything, but just to be clear, Mojave County does not support or promote any kind of politicking or electioneering. We are prohibited by law to use any county resources to that effect. So just to be clear, just, you know, those are the statements of the speaker, just be aware of that.
Thank you, Mr. Espin.
Sure.
Going on to the Board of Supervisors' Consent Agenda, the following items listed under the consent agenda will be considered as a group and acted upon by one motion with no separate discussion of said items unless a board member saw requests. In that event, the item will be removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion and action. Supervisor Johnson, do you have any items you would like removed?
3537.
Supervisor Watson, do you have any items to remove?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Okay, Supervisor Angus?
Thank you, Madam Chair. 1631, 41, 42.
You're gonna have to slow down there. Okay, we've got 16.
16, 31, 41, 42, 46, and 49.
Okay, Supervisor Gold?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I'd like to remove Items 17 and 18.
Thank you for having those in order. Okay, so that leaves none for me to poll. So I'll entertain a motion to approve Items 5 through 53, with the exception of Items 16, 17, 18, 31, 35, 37, 41, 42, 46, and 49.
So moved.
I'll second the motion.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes, and we'll begin with Item Number 16, polled by Supervisor Hildy Angus. This will be to approve the adoption of contract CTR 050596 for the Health Start Program Fund Supervisor Angus?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was just curious, it talks about Kingman and Lake Havasu. Was there a reason that Bullhead City was left out?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Supervisor Angus, the services are provided in all of these communities. The Lake Havasu area and, as an extension of that, the Parker area will be served by that particular position, as well as some of the Kingman cases. So we had staffing sufficient to meet the needs for the Bullhead City area, so this is an extension there.
Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And with that, I move to approve Agenda Item 16.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Item Number 17 was polled by Supervisor Ron Gold. Approve the Contract Amendment Number 4 for Contract ADHS 18-177683. Supervisor Gold?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Denise, I was curious, it talks about eligible adults. This is an immunization program?
It is, yes, that's correct.
It talks about eligible adults. It appears that all minors are eligible for this program?
That is correct.
But it says eligible adults. I'm curious what makes an adult eligible?
Well, in this particular case, we don't actually provide adult flu vaccinations within our clinic area, so we'll be working with a, for this particular contract and for these funds, working with our FQHC, our Federally Qualified Health Clinic, to help supplement their work in reaching out to individuals to increase adult immunizations for flu. So I'm not sure, I'm looking here at my notes, and I apologize, I don't have...
It's my goal to ask you questions that you don't have the answer for.
I know, and you're incredibly effective at that, which I can appreciate. You test me, test me well.
If it was easy, everybody would do it.
But I can, I can find that out for you, okay?
Thank you, ma'am.
Absolutely.
I move that Item 17 be adopted.
Second. Have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Next item, Number 18, also polled by Supervisor Gold. This will be to approve the fiscal year 20 budget adjustment to the Breastfeeding Peer Counselor Program 239045141. Supervisor Gold?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Denise, I'm curious how many clients are in the breastfeeding program, since we spend $54,000 on it?
If you could hold on just one moment, let me see if my Assistant Director knows the answer to that question.
My wife went to a group called Le Leche League when our children were young, to, with help with that also. So I just have some concern about spending $54,000 on things that women have been doing since creation.
Certainly, certainly. So this is actually a promotion through the WIC program as well. While we have individuals who are prenatal and young moms and maybe first-time moms, we have an opportunity there to provide education and encourage them to breastfeed. And so that's kind of a natural kind of tie and link to our WIC program.
And I'll assume it probably saves WIC money in the long run, hopefully, that if you can convince mothers to breastfeed rather than WIC having to pay for formula for them also. It just seems like, I was just curious how many people were there, since we're spending 54K on it?
Supervisor Gold, I am not sure of that number, because we do have a rotation of women who participate in that program. All WIC participants are encouraged to enroll, so we may have a high enrollment rate, but as it rolls from month to month, it all depends on who continues breastfeeding or who then moves on to use formula. But you are correct, it is to decrease the cost of formula.
So we don't do, we don't actually track to see whether the program's effective?
The program itself tracks it, so it would be something that we would have to get from our coordinator and then report back to you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Supervisor Gold, what's your pleasure?
I'll move adoption of Item 18.
Second. Have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Next item, Number 31, polled by Supervisor Hildy Angus. Approve and sign the Revised Employee Cost Agreement to Mojave Educational Services Cooperative Contract Number 17A-ESI-0518. Supervisor Angus?
Thank you very much, Madam Chairman. So I just want to make sure I got this right. So this is an employee that's on contract, correct?
Madam Chair, Supervisor Angus, yes.
And I wasn't aware that our contract employees also got the 2.5% raise that we gave to our employees?
Supervisor Angus, this was a request made to us by the school superintendent. I do believe that the 2.5% was intended for employees, not contracted employees, but we were approached by the school superintendent and asked to work with ESA on this contract.
Because it costs us some in fees, and I don't know if that, Mr. Elters, do you know if that is a policy of ours? I mean, I thought one of the reasons that you come in contract, I'm sure you said, because you're getting other stuff, maybe, I don't know the situation with Mr. McKee. I don't know him at all, if this is, you know, retired and come back, but I just don't think in the past we've done that, and I'm sort of philosophically against it.
Madam Chair, Supervisor Angus, my understanding is it's not a return or retiree, it's an employee that is working in that position and well below the market value for that position, and the fear is if that employee was to move on, the school system would have difficulty replacing. And one other thing, and I have to check this next statement to verify it, I thought this was coming through a grant, so I, the request was for the approval, but I did think there was a grant to cover this one. If you'd like to perhaps continue it, give us, give me a chance to look into it further, I'd be more than happy to do so.
I think Coral Lloyd might be able to shine some light on the financial end of it.
Good morning, Board members, Chairman Bishop, Supervisor Angus. I have a little bit more information on the background of this. It is not a policy of Mojave County, one way or the other, for the contracted employees. The person here is Craig McKee, and I believe that he actually did retire and come back this past year. And I don't know, I don't remember what the exact date of was. And I don't know, I don't remember what the exact date of was his contract, but the contract would need to be amended if the school superintendent chose to increase the pay. Yes, the direct question, would it increase the overall budget? Yes, but we did anticipate that. They discussed it during the school superintendent's round of his budget, so we do have the funding available if the board so chooses to move forward with his request.
Do you think this would set a precedent on other, I mean, because when someone comes in and comes back on contract, they're on contract and their salary is dictated by the contract. So now we're going back and fudging, you know, I always say, but we're moving around the contract, and the time to renegotiate is when your contract is up.
Right. And I think that that's what you've been doing in the past, is when the contract is renewed, then it's come back, and a few times that was, it was increased subsequently. So I don't know if it would set a precedent one way or the other, you've done it the other way. If you chose to go ahead and do this now, then it would become effective date with the date that they've requested, but otherwise it could hold until, I don't believe that the contract is currently renewed, this is just an amendment, correct?
Right.
Could be your pleasure.
Okay.
Madam Chairman.
Supervisor Gold.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Coral, do you know how long is contracts in effect for?
Yeah, I was gonna say, the short answer is no. I could get that information for you. It looks like the board approved this on January seventh initially, so if I were to make an assumption, I would say that it was probably effective at the first of the year.
And these are normally year-to-year contracts, or are they multiple year?
Generally ESA has us renegotiate year-to-year.
Okay, and it also looks like it's retroactive to August fifteenth?
Correct, that was the request.
Members, it seems to me we have a contract with the individual, that we should continue with the contract, and he can renegotiate his contract when it comes out for renewal. Thank you.
Okay, so... Any other questions? Supervisor Watson.
Thank you, Chairman Bishop. I had the opportunity and pleasure to work with Mr. McKee on an issue on one of our very small school districts, and in light of the fact that most of our employment contracts are for those contracts that are in excess of $100,000. This contract is in the neighborhood of $68,000, two-and-a-half percent, which is very equal to the amount that the employees of Mojave County received during the last budget session. So I think in light of those facts, we should take a look at those facts in consideration of the two-and-a-half percent. If it is the wish of the board to readdress it at the new contract in January, I would certainly hope that Mr. McKee would receive the two-and-a-half percent on the renewal of his contract. Those are the only comments I have. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, can I correct a statement that I made? I was looking at my wrong backup. It looks like this contract was effective June first, so we just recently entered into the contract with Mr. McKee, which may be the reason for the request now. He would have to wait until June of 2021 to renegotiate.
Okay, does that clear that up for you?
Sure.
Okay, what's your pleasure? Do you want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I move that item thirty-one be denied.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to deny. It's been seconded. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion to deny is approved.
It's carried. Sorry, that's the term.
I'm sorry.
Motion is carried.
Motion is carried. Okay, the next item is item number thirty-five. It's polled by Supervisor Buster Johnson. Approve and sign Amendment One to Contract Number Sixteen-PS-07, Architectural Services, Kingman Superior Court Building Construction and Historic Courthouse Remodel Legacy Project with Dick and Fixmiller Design Group, Phoenix, Arizona, in the amount of $467,855.60 for a revised contract total of $2,665,553.60 to authorize the additional special inspection services for the Law and Justice Center New Building Addition and additional services for the future historic courthouse remodel permitting, procurement, and construction. Further approved transfers of $304,000 from the $400,000 contingency approved for Phase One construction and $100,000 transfer assignment for the 5.5 million approved for Phase Two construction in fiscal year 2020-2021 budget. Supervisor Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And this project already seems to be going over budget or at least eating up all the contingency funds. I think we're gonna have more rises in costs with the cost of materials. We have the court project going now, we're finishing up the library project. I would think we need to just slow the roll down on this and wait a bit before we move ahead. That was the only reason I pulled it, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Any further comments or questions? Okay, seen then.
Madam Chair, if I could please.
Supervisor Watson.
I think it's incumbent upon us to proceed with the architectural services to keep the entire program on board. So with that, I'll make a motion for the approval of item number thirty-five and the Amendment of One to the Contract Number Sixteen-PS-07.
Okay.
Before we vote, maybe we could have somebody come up and explain to us what this is all about.
Certainly.
Madam Chair, members of the board, I can probably give a brief overview, and then, Steve, if you need some more detail, could speak to it. But when this contract was originally negotiated with DFDG, it was with the intent that we would do one project for both the remodel of the old courthouse and the new Law and Justice Center. In January of 2019, the board moved forward with a phased project, and so the architect that was awarded the contract is now being asked to do a little bit of additional work associated with a two-phase project. So this change is to address that additional work in order to run this project as two separate construction projects. We will be, if we move forward, going out to bid for the remodel of the existing courthouse, and so there's the process that the architect will have to go through with us to assist in procurement, and then the construction administration, and the longer timeline of doing the project as a two-phase project. Mr. Lotosky, do you have anything to add?
Thank you very much, Tara. Mr. Lakowski, good morning. Supervisor Johnson, go ahead.
Thank you. I'm curious, you said there was just a little bit of additional, and it's cost us $400,000 for that?
I think Mr. Lakowski's at the podium and would probably enlighten us with that.
Good morning, Chairman Bishop, members of the board, Supervisor Johnson. Yes, the proposed cost of architectural services to support the Phase Two Permitting, Procurement, and Construction Administration totals $404,322, and as Ms. Acton has expressed, this is due to the architect's significant additional work as it relates to phasing the project. One, completing the new building addition first, and then coming back and re-procuring the, what we call the Phase Two project or the Historic Courthouse Remodel. When the project came before the board, for the contract, I should say, for approval in August 2016, at that time, it was taken that the entire Law and Justice Center would be constructed as a single construction project, both the new building addition and the remodel, so with the architect having to go through an additional round of project permitting for Phase Two as well as supporting the procurement process, answering requests for information, for example. And then I must point out that we have seen, and this is for the good, a substantial amount of special inspection work with the new building addition. These include special inspections, engineering inspections as it relates to the complex construction, structural materials related that has taken place at the new building addition. But I must profess that we are drawing largely from the $400,000 contingency, which the board recently appropriated for Phase One, and that $400,000 contingency, in addition to the amount that was previously set when the construction was awarded, still is less than four percent of the overall construction cost for Phase One, and that's a really strong figure, you know, when you consider the state of the industry and construct, vertical construction in general. Anytime we can bring a project in at just five percent or less of contingency is typically really sound, really sound construction practice. Just wanted to share that.
Okay. Any further questions? Supervisor Gold.
Madam Chairman. So Mr. Lotosky, because we broke this project into a two-phase project, that drove the cost up almost half a million dollars?
Correct. Supervisor Gould, for the architectural services, the $404,000 also contains part of the construction administration that had to be spent out during Phase One for a number of special inspections, inspections that were unforeseen but critical to ensuring the adequate construction of the new building addition.
So sir, how much of that is because of the cost of breaking it into a two-phase project versus the additional costs on the Phase One?
I believe we have that information broken out. I have it here. It is approximately by phasing out the project, we have incurred approximately The additional $275,000 necessary for Phase Two is just the construction administration for that work. That was among the funds that was utilized for the Phase One construction for a number of essential special inspections as well as overall construction administration.
So the hundred grand is the additional cost for baking into a two-phase project?
That's correct.
And the rest is from additional inspections from the first phase?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Do you have any other questions, Supervisor Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess the question that I would have for Mr. Lotosky would be, these are two separate buildings, so the inspections are still different inspections. It's not like they come in and inspect one thing that covers both buildings. Is that correct?
Supervisor Johnson, that is correct. When the engineer-architect proposed on construction administration for the entire project, they proposed a lump-sum amount that they deemed to be their best estimate at the time. That amount has largely been exhausted with the Phase One construction due to the complex construction that had occurred that needed special inspections. And then another appropriation of construction administration is now necessary as part of this change on the request, in the amount of about $275,000.
Okay, so what you're saying is the one we're doing now has gone over on their inspections, and so we're making up for it on this building?
That is correct, Supervisor Johnson.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion at this point.
Madam Chair, I already have a motion to approve on the floor from Supervisor Watson.
Okay, do we have a second?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a second from anyone?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No. Aye.
I'll vote yes. Motion passes. Next item, number thirty-seven. This is polled by Supervisor Buster Johnson. Approve fiscal year 2019-2020 end-of-year budget revisions for Superior Court, Lake Havasu Justice Court, indigent defense and public defender, and probation and juvenile detention. Go ahead, Supervisor Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question is, we're saying that professional services that have to do with the splitting up of the courts or what's costing us money, I don't see a light on it for these professional services, and I'm not understanding why us splitting up the court would cost us money.
Okay, we have our finance director at the podium, and she looks like she has the answer to that.
Good morning again, Supervisor Johnson. The, I believe that when we originally anticipated this budget, we were expecting the deconsolidation to go just into August, but it actually, the final day, the final deconsolidation occurred in September. So we had budgeted just over $40,000, which covered about a month of the cost to Lake Havasu City. So the final cost actually was about $92,000 and change, and that is, let me find it here on your backup for you. It is right at the bottom of the page for the Justice Court for Lake Havasu. It says number forty-three, Other Charges and Services, and then the line item, Professional Services. And again, it's showing that we budgeted forty-two, five-forty-two. It ended up costing us to Lake Havasu City about $92,000. So that is the shortage. However, because those employees were still working for, predominantly for Lake Havasu City, we have a savings in the salaries line item where we can transfer that back and forth between those two. For the actual cost and looking at the, you know, what did it really cost us to deconsolidate, I think that it was about $15,000 in total because we were previously using some equipment and furnishings that belonged to the city of Lake Havasu City, and we ended up having to purchase some of those items, and that is listed as well on that same page under the Tools and Equipment line item, and then Equipment Over $1,000. So the two together is about what it really, you know, cost us, but does that explain what we're describing with those professional services?
Did you say item, or it's number forty-three?
Yep. Do you have the backup material?
Yes, I'm looking at forty-three. It says Legal Services, Mental Health.
Keep going, there should be a page. It's page number one, under the title, well, this is kind of hard to, can I show, would I be able to put it up here?
It's on the page right underneath the previous page.
Yep.
They split that.
Says Lake Havasu Justice Court at the bottom on page one of the Lake Havasu Justice Court, so in the packet, it is one, two, three, four, five pages back. So the first, the first couple of pages are the Superior Court, the first two pages. That next page of the detail is the Lake Havasu Justice Court, the next two pages are the Lake Havasu Court. So at the very bottom of that page, it's showing the Professional Services line item. And I don't know if the camera can that up.
And that answers my question, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
Chairman.
Supervisor Gold.
So Coral, if it only cost us 15 grand, why are we talking about 75 grand? Are we paying Lake Havasu's expenses awaiting reimbursement, or?
So for July and August, the court was still operated by the Lake Havasu Consolidated Court. So we had an agreement for professional services, it was about $550,000 a year, if you will, that we were paying them on a monthly, or on a quarterly basis, so if you divide the amount up, it was running about $45,000 a month for that contract, and we had to pay two months of that contract.
Okay, so we, it took another month to get it done than what we had expected. Okay, thank you.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion approved.
Second the motion?
The motion is second. All those in favor signify by stating aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Next item, number 41. This was polled by Supervisor Hilda Angus. Authorize the Public Works Director to issue a special events permit to the Pilgrim Operations LLC for the use of Mojave County right-of-way on County Route, County Route 91 between miles six and seven east of San Hollow Bridge in the scenic area. Supervisor Angus.
Thank you. I just thought that this was interesting. Isn't street outlaws like speed racing or drag racing or something like that? Or do I have my reality shows mixed up?
Mr. Lottowski is at the podium.
Chairman Bishop, Supervisor Angus, yes, it's drag racing. And what we were approached by is the filming company for this Discovery Channel show originally wanting to use Scenic Boulevard. And because obviously an event like this demands a hard closure of the road, staff kindly worked and really productively worked with the production company and kind of reasoned that we really could not consider hard closing Scenic Boulevard the only ingress and egress, you know, practically to the greater scenic area. But we suggested for their consideration, a section of CR 91, which is just east of San Hollow Bridge. This is a section that is largely not fronted by any development properties, developed properties, as well as can be easily accessed either side by the I-15 interchanges, either at Mesquite or at Beaver Dam Little Field. So, the production company was, you know, very ecstatic in having this opportunity. And as a result, staff can make now with confidence this recommendation. But yes, it will actually result in a future show or shows that show drag racing in Mojave County. So, perhaps the whole economic benefit as well as the benefit by the production company staffs staying in the area. So, we want to make it work as staff, but for practical purposes.
Okay, that's all.
Supervisor Gold?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. This is where they pretend that they're illegally street racing.
Supervisor Gould, yes, and as a complete disclosure, the county has no entries in this event.
That's good. Glad to hear that.
Madam Chair, make a motion to approve.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Next item, 42, also polled by Supervisor Angus. Approve the adoption of Board of Supervisors Resolution Number 2020-139, authorizing, in accordance with the county adopted manual on uniform traffic control devices in Arizona realized statute, the establishment of a 25 mile per hour speed limit on the Davis Camp Entry Road. Supervisor Angus.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I just wanted to pull this out to thank you guys for doing this. You know, it's very crowded, and it's always better to err on the side of caution. And so, that's it. I just wanted it to be out there in public. Now, it's 25 miles an hour going down to Davis Camp. So, if there's, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second the motion?
Motion approved. It's been seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Going on to item 46, polled by Supervisor Angus. Approve the agreement between MCSO and MST EPP for accepting funds for the inmate release coordinator, creating a budget as necessary. Supervisor Angus.
Thank you. I just wanted to know if this was the same, this, because we already had one. Was this just a furthering of that contract, or is this a whole different program?
This is a little bit different program. Good morning. It is, we're taking the job description of our first inmate release coordinator and basically just replicating it for all practical purposes. A lot of the work is going to be essentially the same, although this gives us an opportunity to partner with the Kingman Justice Servat Court, as well as the probation department and the other area providers that we have for mental health services and substance use issues in a whole. This is just an opportunity through MSTEP for us to expand some of what we're already doing.
Okay, so this will work with all the providers of, all through the county?
Well, the program, and I have Bob DeVries here with MSTEP, and he may be able to explain the program.
No, that's okay.
A little bit better. But what this does is they've created kind of a unique partnership with the Kingman Justice Servat Court. So, that does restrict some of the area, as a lot of the people that are going to be in the program, obviously, are going to be in this area, or those that have business through that court, I think is kind of the funnel point for that. But because a lot of these people are going to be incarcerated, then that's where the jail is able to come in and, excuse me, help identify people and then assist in that program. So, it doesn't open up these services countywide. It's kind of a smaller regional project that MSTEP has put together, and we're just partnering with them.
Okay. And with that, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second the motion?
Motion and second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number 49, approve the appointment of Carrie Fearing to the Mojave County Plan and Zoning Commission. Supervisor Angus.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I need to pull this item. Ms. Fearing had a change of mind, so I'm requesting no action taken.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion that no action be taken. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Well, hold up. There was no second on that, and we don't need to do, if no action is being taken, we don't need to take any action.
Okay, good enough. Thanks for that correction. Okay, we'll now go on to our public hearings. First item, number 54. I'll open the public hearing for a discussion of possible action to approve the adoption of Board of Supervisors Resolution Number 2020-132. This is an amendment to the South Mojave Valley Area Plan from a residential recreational land use designation to a commercial land use designation for Assessor's Parcel Number We do have one person signed up to speak on this item. Mr. Alex Hill, out of Lake Elsinore, California. Mr. Hill, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Chairman Bishop, members of the board. This is my request for rezone, so I just wanted to be here and just present myself available for questions if you guys had any. And also, it would include item 55, the subsequent rezone as well.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hill. Does anyone have any questions for the speaker? Okay, not yet. We may pull you back, though, as this progresses.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, I'll close the public hearing and open it up for discussion or a motion.
Madam Chairman.
Supervisor Gold?
I move that item 54 be denied.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor for denial. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. It's been seconded by Supervisor Johnson. Is there any further discussion? I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion for denial passes. Going on to the next item, number 55. Open a public hearing. This will be a discussion of possible action to approve the adoption of Board of Supervisors Resolution Number 2020-133, a rezone for Assessor Parcel Number 224-30-038 from residential recreation zone to a general commercial zone to allow for an RV boat and mini storage in the Mojave Valley vicinity. Okay, I have no one signed up to speak, other than the applicant, Mr. Hill. So, I'll close the public hearing. Entertain a motion if there's not any further comments.
Madam Chairman.
Supervisor Gold?
I move that item 55 be denied.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and second. All those in favor of denial signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Okay. Motion passes. Okay, item 56. I'll open the public hearing. This will be a discussion of possible action. Approve the adoption of Board of Supervisors Resolution Number 2020-134. This is an amendment to the Mojave County General Plan from rural development area land use designation to a suburban development area for Assessor's Parcel Number 31706350 in the Dolan Springs vicinity. Okay, I have no one signed up to speak on this item, so I'll close the public hearing and open it up for discussion or a motion.
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion for approval. Item number 56.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next item, I'll open the public hearing for a discussion of possible action. Approve the adoption of Board of Supervisors Resolution Number 2020-135. This is a rezone for a portion of Assessor's Parcel Number 31706350 from an agriculture residential five-acre minimum lot size to an agriculture residential zone. I have no one signed up to speak on this item, so I'll close the public hearing and open it up for discussion and/or a motion.
Motion to approve?
Second. Have a motion to approve and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number 58, I'll open the public hearing. This will be a discussion of possible action to approve the adoption of Board of Supervisors Resolution Number 2020-136, an amendment to the Mojave County General Plan, suburban development to heavy industrial land use, and an amendment to the Meconicle Area Plan for the suburban land use designation to urban land use designation for a portion of Assessor's Parcels Number 206135 and 038 in the Meconicle vicinity. I have no one signed up to speak on this item. I will close the public hearing and open this up for discussion or a motion.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Have a motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item 59, I'll open the public hearing, discussion of possible action. Ray, approve the adoption of Board of Supervisors Resolution Number 2020-137. This is a rezone for Assessor's Parcels Numbers 20613035 and 038 from commercial manufacturing open lot storage three-acre minimum lot size zone and an agriculture residential 36-acre minimum lot zone to a commercial manufacturing open lot storage three-acre minimum lot size zone and an agriculture residential three-acre minimum lot size zone. So, there's no one signed up to speak on this item, and I'll close the public hearing and open this one up for discussion and/or a motion.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Have a motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next item, number 60. I'll open the public hearing for a discussion of possible action. Ray, approve the adoption of Mojave County Ordinance Number 2020-05, an amendment to the Mojave County Zoning Ordinance, Section 35A, setback and area requirements to revise the side yard setbacks and address parking placement on cornered lots. I don't have anyone signed up to speak on this one. I'll close the public hearing and open it up for discussion or a motion.
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion for approval.
Second.
Have a motion and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 61, I'll open the public hearing for a discussion of possible action. Ray, deny the adoption of Board of Supervisors Ordinance Number 2020-06, an amendment to Sections 19, Section 22, and 37K, establishment of recreational vehicles and park models, general provisions to allow park model units as an allowed use in agriculture residential and residential and single-family residential manufactured homes as recommended zones as recommended by the P&amp;Z Commission. I have no one signed up to speak on this, so I'll close the public hearing and open this up for discussion and/or a motion.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I think this would be a big mistake if the board goes ahead with this. That's all, Madam Chair.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. It has been seconded by Supervisor Johnson. All those in favor for denial, please say aye.
Second that.
Go in order.
Yes. Supervisor Johnson, can you verify that you did second that?
I didn't know what the, I didn't hear the motion.
Okay, I apologize. I thought you said you seconded it, so.
I'm going to retract my motion and let the person whose district this is.
Okay, Supervisor Angus has retracted her motion. Anyone else want to take a stab at this? If not, it's in my district, and I will make a motion that we approve the denial.
Yeah, this is a county-wide.
Yeah.
Right.
Madam Chairman, why don't we have a little discussion on this? I'm curious if any staff had taken a look at what's the price difference between a maximum size park model and the minimum size manufactured home?
Okay, we have Tim Walsh that can explain this.
In reality, what this is doing is they were asked, the only question that was asked was whether you can put these on, it wasn't on R1 lots. It was, actually, they didn't study the R1 issue. They took a look at putting them on different pieces of property. I'll let Tim expound.
Right, and it's my understanding, it's the quality of the home is what the problem that the P&amp;Z Commission was in discussion about, so.
Good morning. Mr. Walsh, if you would take over.
You bet. Good morning, Board. Chairman, Supervisor Gould. In August this year, the Board of Supervisors directed staff to look into the possibility of allowing park model homes to be placed on additional zones without, or throughout the county. With that, we looked into park model homes and prepared a report and a recommendation to the Planning and Zoning Commission. That report found some interesting items. Park model homes, what we found, are constructed to a different standard than manufactured homes versus stick-built homes. Site-built homes or stick-built homes are constructed to the International Building Codes. Modular homes are, yeah, modular homes are constructed to HUD standards, and park model homes are built to an ANSI standard. Now, there are different requirements with each of those different standards. One thing of note is that the, both the stick-built homes or site-built homes and the modular homes are both inspected. Building Department provides inspections for site-built homes. Modular homes during their construction are inspected in the factories by the state. The state oversees that. What we found, though, is that park model homes are not under either jurisdiction and are actually not inspected in those factories. They are, they are required to be constructed to the ANSI standard, but ultimately, there's not an inspection being performed. They're constructed in factories similar to manufactured homes, but the state has authority to inspect the manufactured homes. They have not assumed that authority to inspect those park model homes. That was one of the items that was of concern to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Additionally, in the backup, you'll find basically a breakdown between the International Residential Code HUD requirements and ANSI standards, and you'll see some varying differences, one in relation to One, in relation to safety glazing near certain areas, ingress egress areas. You'll find electrical requirements for both HUD homes and stick-built homes that are not required for park models, and a few other items. Those items, in addition to the not being inspected, as well as a concern for property values, were all which came about in the discussion in the Planning and Zoning Commission and led to their recommendation of denial.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Walsh. And initially, I have to say that I was in favor of this because in a visual appearance, they look like miniature mobile homes, like a little tiny house, but since then, it's been pointed out that the inspections are different, and it could be a liability to the county. And that's why I made the motion to approve the denial of this.
Madam Chairman.
Supervisor Watson.
If I could add one more aspect to that. I believe in the backup, it also indicates that there might be a difference in the fire protection and fire code as built into the park model.
That is correct, and that is...Thank you, Supervisor Watson. That is in the backup as well. Stick-built homes and HUD-built homes or HUD-standard homes have certain fire restrictions. Fire...You'll have your fire blocking in certain areas required in those, whereas in the ANSI standards, it was less stringent than what is found in both the stick-built homes and the HUD manufactured homes.
So if I've got this course of thought correct, help me out here a little bit. So on a park model, we're going to pull a park model up to a site, and then we're going to physically plug it in to an electrical outlet and without an inspection.
No. Supervisor Watson, part of the recommended ordinance that Planning and Zoning prepared and put before the Planning and Zoning Commission did state that the park model would be built to ANSI standards and that the placement of that park model in connection to electrical outlets and utilities would be required to be inspected by county. So we would...County inspectors would oversee that power construct... You know, basically putting the power pole...
Power to the point.
Exactly, bringing it to the park model.
Okay. I just...I have a great deal of concern.
And Tim, these are allowed in some areas, depending on the zoning. Is that correct?
That is correct. So our current zoning ordinance does allow for park models to be placed in... And I'm going to lean on Scott here to make sure I don't get this wrong, but currently, they are allowed in RV parks and is...
Madam Chair, Commissioners, they're currently allowed in RV parks and in manufactured home parks when they are independent models or the park allows for them, so...
So is that the only place that you can put a park model?
Correct. We currently treat them the same as almost a travel trailer because they don't have the construction as a manufactured home. So if you wanted to place a park model home on an RV park, then we would treat it just the same as a travel trailer.
Okay, but you can put them on some residential acreage, like the RVs are being done, as long as you get a permit?
We currently don't have that in our ordinance, that you could put them on a residential parcel only in the RV parks.
So how do we allow RVs on residential lots then to be used as a temporary residence?
We have a permit. Within our ordinance, we allow for an RV to be placed on a parcel or a single-family residential parcel that allows for an RV. We don't have that same standard for a travel trailer because a travel...not a travel trailer, a park model unit doesn't typically... There's two types of park model units. You have an independent and a dependent park model. And currently, in our zoning ordinance, we only allow for those in the RV parks.
Interesting. Okay.
Madam Chairman.
Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. So as a secondary residence, we allow, on certain sized parcels, we allow an RV as a permanent residence?
Not as a permanent residence, as an accessory residence.
Yes.
And they would have to get the yearly permit.
Could you set a park model in that same situation?
Not currently with our zoning ordinance. We do not allow for that.
Because of the way that our ordinance is written?
Correct.
Thank you. One more question, Madam Chairman.
Sure.
How tall are walls when we begin fire blocking under International Building Code?
That is a very good question. I do not have my building official here with me, and I know there are certain...Basically, your separation between your garage and your livable area will put fire blocking in. I'm not sure on the height when we start doing it throughout.
I believe it's 10-foot.
I'll go with that.
I doubt you have a wall in a park model, mobile home, that has a 10-foot wall. So the fire blocking argument is moot. You don't require blocking in an 8-foot wall. Sometimes, they get blocked often, but it's not required. But I believe when you get up to 10-foot, above 10-foot, I think that's when you start blocking because you're worried about a pathway for fire inside of a duck chase or something like that. Thank you.
Okay, I'm still a little confused why an RV is acceptable, but a park model is not. I know there's different standards that they're built to, but it's still confusing. I did make the motion to approve the denial, though, and it may warrant a little more research and to be brought back later.
Chairman Bishop, if I may, just to expand a little bit on what Scott had mentioned. Park models, you have two separate kinds of park models. One are dependent and the other is independent. And basically, that distinction is a dependent park model does not have the storage containers for both water storage or for the black water or gray water, where an independent model would, and you're a RV or a travel trailer, those are all independent models, so those would all have that storage capability. So part of that distinction of allowing a travel trailer as a temporary, basically an annual permit, is that they are independent, they have that storage capability, they can be relocated. The black water can be dumped and that. Whereas in a park model, for a dependent park model, they do not have that same capability, and they would need to be connected in a more permanent way to sanitary facilities.
Madam Chairman.
Supervisor Gould.
Tim, I believe if you were going to put a...get an RV permit on rural residential property, the county requires a septic tank anyway.
I'll have to double-check on that and see...
Since I live out in the middle of nowhere, I am somewhat familiar with these.
You've got a little more. Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Supervisor Watson?
One more question and follow-up on Supervisor Gould's comment. On a dependent model, that would require hooking up to a septic system.
That's correct.
Could that dependent model then hook into a current system designed for another structure? I've seen it happen time and time again, and we've tried to correct that over the years.
And that's a great question, Supervisor Watson. Our septic systems are designed typically, and it depends on the foresight of the person installing the septic system. Generally, septic systems are designed for the residence that's planned for that location, for that septic system. For example, a three-bedroom, two-bath house will have a certain-sized septic tank for that. A lot of times, what we'll see, one of the issues that they'll run into is if they want to expand that to a four-bedroom or a five-bedroom house, that septic system will need to be increased. That's correct.
So then, in either case, a dependent or independent, for a year's time, would really require hooking up into a septic system?
Yes, it would. While an independent could be relocated and taken to and disposed of elsewhere, a dependent would be there, but definitely, if they're going to be there for a year or more, yeah, it would need to be connected.
By the time that they hook up to the water and electricity and awnings and steps and those types of things, I don't see that happening a lot. Thank you very much.
And one thing, if I may add as well, is the RV permit is a temporary permit to be renewed each year, coming back in to do that, so...
Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Tim, I believe about every house in Lake Havasu City built after about 1985 has a RV dump on the side of the house. And I bet none of them sized the septic tank to handle that RV waste. And another side note, if you dump your RV tank with that blue sanitizer into your septic tank, you'll be calling the septic tank contractor because that will kill all the bacteria in your septic tank and ruin your septic tank and leach field. Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I may correct just one statement that I made.
Yes, please.
So we do allow for...We brought up or mentioned how park models are independent and dependent. And in our zoning ordinance, we have a definition for the dependent models. They can be located in our RV subdivisions or RV parks or in manufactured home parks where management allows for them. And then, for our independent park models, we can establish those the same as a travel trailer. So if it's independent, it has its own holding tanks, we can establish those in the same manner as a travel trailer. So if it is on a single-family residence, they could get the temporary permit for the year on those ones.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. So Scott, it has to be an independent to be on a piece of land with a RV permit?
What are...Yeah, so if it's independent, then it could be established the same as an RV or a travel trailer. As a dependent, then it's dependent on a septic system and other utilities. It's essentially a manufactured home, but it doesn't have the same inspections as a manufactured home. We do, to answer your question earlier, we do require that on a single-family residence parcel, you still... And you want to get an RV permit for a year, you do have to have a septic system on site.
But it still has to be a independent...
Independent, correct.
Which makes no sense.
Well, what...
A big holding tank in the ground versus a 20-gallon holding tank under the trailer.
One of the reasons for that is we want to...And some of the requirements when you're establishing an RV in a single-family residence for that zone for that one year, we require that they remain roadworthy as well so that if they do have to be removed or in a flooded area, then they could be moved at that moment because they're not being established permanently. If they're dependent, then they're essentially being established permanently, and we didn't inspect them. And so if it's an independent, we consider it just a travel trailer, an RV, and it would be treated the same as an RV. And if you're looking to place it on a single-family residential zone, an AR zone, then it requires at least a septic system if you're getting that yearly permit.
Okay, now that everyone is, except for me, is thoroughly confused.
Sorry about that.
So Scott...
Thank you, though, sir.
If there's a residence in rural Mojave County that's a dependent park model that's set up with porches and awnings and steps, and it's a beautiful property, they're still in violation and would have to remove that home if the county became aware of it?
Essentially, yes, because that building never was inspected.
Wow.
Madam Chairman. Bearing in mind, we only had countywide building inspections started, what, 10 years ago?
True. 2007? 2007.
I've beaten this dead horse long enough. We can vote if you want.
Yeah, there is a lot of discussion that could still go on. It just seems not fair to simplify. And it's rather bizarre that we're able to, in America, manufacture little tiny mobile homes, but they're illegal anywhere other than an RV park. But they're more...They look more like a mobile home than they... You can't hook them to your pickup truck and haul them down the street. You have to hire a moving company to move these little homes.
Well, the issue comes in is that it's not an inspected building. We never did an inspection. The state never did an inspection. And so we would just treat them just the same as a travel trailer because...
So we can't inspect them after the fact because the electrical and the plumbing is all enclosed and...
To my understanding, we wouldn't have any standards to inspect them because the standards that we inspect by are for stick-built homes.
Sounds like the manufacturing company needs to make some changes in their manufacturing.
Madam Chairman.
Sure, go ahead.
Manufactured homes, you guys don't inspect...All you inspect is the setup and the electrical and plumbing connections.
Correct, but the state does an inspection on those ones.
Sure, theoretically.
So the county is protecting our liability because there is the lacking of inspection on the level of the state where they're being manufactured?
Correct.
Okay, I think I understand it. I may not like it, but I think I understand it.
Madam Chairman.
Supervisor Gould.
Which begs my original question. Did anybody look up what's the price of the biggest park model versus the smallest mobile home? I don't know that there's a whole...There may not be a whole lot of price difference, really.
I don't think there's that much.
Yeah. And I don't know that that's the job of government, but it is the job of logic, so...
I don't know that we took the cost into account in our analysis on this.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? We're all shaking our head up here. I'm sure so was the Planning and Zoning Commission when they were discussing this. There's a motion on the floor. It's not been seconded yet.
I'll second your motion.
Okay, we have a motion.
Restate the motion.
The motion was to approve the denial. So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes to deny. Okay. Next item, 62. I'll open the public hearing. This will be a discussion of possible action to approve the adoption of Board of Supervisors Ordinance Number 2020-07, requiring an owner, lessee, or occupant of real property in Mojave County to remove rubbish, trash, weeds, filth, debris, and dilapidated buildings constituting a public nuisance, prescribing the procedure for notice and appeal, providing for the removal thereof by the county and the assessment of the costs thereof as a lien against the property in the event of noncompliance, and prescribing a penalty for the placement of such materials on the property of another. Sounds like an attorney wrote that one. We do have one person signed up to speak, or two people signed up to speak. First one is Katie Manning out of Kingman. Katie, you have three minutes to tell us why you're in favor of this.
Good morning, Madam Chairman and Supervisors. I am in full, complete agreement with this. I've read the old one. I like what you have done to bring it up to date. We have a number of properties here in Mojave County, I don't know all of them, that this really needs to be addressed and tightened up on. And I don't know what the cost would be. Do we need to have new employees handling this to keep abreast of it? Because I'm sure we're looking at talking to mortgage companies, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, to get these properties cleaned up. Okay, but I am in total favor of it. When I lived in California, the community I lived in, they instigated this, and boy... the community I lived in, they instigated this, and boy, oh, boy, just really, really improved things. And I know this county has grown quite a bit, but we still need to keep ourselves up and be positive. So I'm for it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for those comments.
And I'm under three minutes.
Our next speaker is Ms. Joy Bancroft. She's from the Topock area, speaking-
From Golden Shores.
Golden Shores.
Good morning, Madam Chairman.
You know, when I was growing up, that meant the same thing. I understand.
Yeah, thank you. I am too totally in favor of this, adopting this ordinance. It's well-written, has a lot of detail, expansion of dilapidated buildings, and definitely looking at it in more detail because there is, like she said, a lot of nuisance properties out there, and this is way overdue. The only comment I have is in the current ordinance and the one that is adopted, if I can read it really quick, there's several sections referring to that the dilapidated or the public nuisance shall be made by a chief building official or an authorized representative, including but not limited to a health officer, the fire chief, and the planning and zoning manager, and who hereby authorize to take such action as may be required to enforce the provision of the ordinance. I can tell you that in unincorporated areas, and especially Golden Shores, we have a fire chief that has no authority to have anything to do with these nuisance properties, and they really should. They should have a lot more involvement and be motivated to take a look at these properties and tell us if it's an extreme hazard. So it's been in these ordinances, but the fire chief tells me he has no authority. So that's just my comment to it. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Tim Walsh.
Thank you. Those are the only two people that spoke up to speak. So I'll close the public hearing and ask, maybe Mr. Walsh could come up and give us the short version of how this is going to work. And I have to say, I agree with the two ladies that spoke. It's about time.
Chairman Bishop, members of the board, as directed by, well, I'll go a little bit further. In the most current budget, the Board of Supervisors approved moving the enforcement of trash, debris, and that from Public Health over to Development Services in order to have a more efficient program and to be able to try and reach as many of these as we can. Part of that, that moving of those duties over from Public Health to Development Services required some changes in authorities and looking at which authorities Planning and Zoning has, Building has, versus what authorities Public Health has delegated to them from the state. This, these changes to this ordinance basically clarify a few more duties for Planning and Zoning and the Building Department in particular. Basically, we expounded on some of the definitions of debris and public nuisance, and we went in and identified really some conditions for determining a public nuisance, and then identified the content that would go in that notification to the offenders. And lastly, State Statute 11268, which provides the authority for Planning and Zoning and Development Services and Building to provide these abatements, requires a payment, a payment plan be allowed to the property owners that are abated. So we added that in as well. Ultimately, we believe that this will help us in being more proactive, more efficient in addressing these dilapidated buildings as well as trash and debris and those types of complaints that we receive.
Okay, well, I know we've been battling this as long as I've been on the Board of Supervisors, and it's a huge problem in Mojave County, and especially in the more populated, unincorporated areas of Mojave County. So I personally want to thank you for doing the work and working with Public Health and figuring out how we can condense this down to where there's not so many different departments doing so many different things, where Peter doesn't know what Paul's doing or whatever. So I'm looking forward to seeing how this works and any support I can give you. You certainly have it. Supervisor Watson.
Director Walsh, job well done. Thank you. And with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve item 62.
And I'd like to second it, but Supervisor Gold has a question.
Strangely enough, Supervisor Gold has a question. Mr. Walsh, if this, if the offending residence is the primary residence of that property owner, they are protected against foreclosure by the Homestead Act, correct?
That is correct.
So you will not be able to foreclose on people's primary residence to pay for the abatement?
That is correct.
So that kind of, that cuffs us certain, on certain instances, but a lot of it, a lot of it is not owner occupied?
That's correct. And ultimately, this will allow us to still provide the abatement. It'll just be on the recouping of our funds. We wouldn't be able to foreclose on those properties.
Sure, which is where we are now. We can abate things and not get paid.
That's correct.
Thanks.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Okay, we do have a motion on the floor. It's been seconded. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Good luck, Tim. Next item, 63. I'll open the public hearing. This will be a discussion of possible action. Re-approve the Edward Bryan Memorial Justice Assistant Grant and approve creation of a budget for these funds in the amount of $10,466. I have no one signed up to speak on this item, so I'll close the public hearing and open it up for discussion. Our motion. Sheriff Schuster. Good morning.
Good morning. Well, good morning, Madam Chair, distinguished members of the board, Attorney Esplin, of course, Mr. Elters, and our lovely clerk of the board, Ginny Anderson. It's nice to see you all today. Buster on the phone, hello. I'd like to go on the record before we talk about this agenda item, to welcome the newest addition to the Schuster family. My grandson, my first grandchild, was born September 2nd, Archer Thomas Depperini. I did take a little time off to enjoy that, and that's why you see some stuff growing off my face. So it may, may or may not stay. I don't know. We're here today on the Edward Burns Grant. This is a repetitive grant. This is something that we get every year for equipment. It just requires the chairman's signature, so we did put it on the agenda. And I do want to bring up, we have in the audience today Teresa Woods. Teresa came to us from the assessor's office. She is now our grant coordinator. She's doing an extremely wonderful job for us. So you can anticipate seeing more and more grants coming before you. We believe strongly in pursuing grants to save taxpayer money in our ongoing efforts to increase our capabilities. Any questions for me?
Any questions for the sheriff? Supervisor Gold?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Sheriff, no photo of the grandkid?
Oh, I got plenty. I'll bring one to the next meeting. We'll put it up on the board. I should have brought one. You're correct.
Who is Edward Brian, by the way?
You know, I don't know. That grant's been around for so many years. I imagine it was someone in law enforcement, well-recognized, and they, you know, obviously catered the grant towards his name, but not 100% sure.
Thank you, sir.
Be right. All right, thank you.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chairman.
Go ahead.
Move that item 63 be adopted.
I'll second the motion.
Have a motion and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, we'll go on now to the regular agenda. First item, 64, is be a discussion of possible action to approve the Mojave County Development Environmental Quality Division's request to hold the fall household hazardous waste events in Bullhead City and Kingman on November 7th and 8th, 2020, or other such suitable date pending contractor availability. So I do have a person that wants to speak on this, so Royanne Ortiz.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, members of the board. I was wondering if this household hazardous waste would include electronic equipment. Is that something that we'll be able to bring there and have it recycled?
Mr. Walsh will come down and answer that question for you.
Thank you.
I will, if I, I'll get with Ms. Ortiz after the meeting and find out for sure on the electronic information. I'm not sure if that, I know typically we'll do, you know, tires, oil, any kind of hazardous substance in the house. I imagine that electronics will also include, but I'll confirm that and get with Ms. Ortiz.
Don't we normally have a separate cleanup for electronics?
Not that I'm aware of that we do separately. We typically hold two household hazardous wastes a year, and I believe electronics are included in that, but I'll confirm just to make sure.
Okay, maybe that's the city that does that. Okay.
Madam Chairman.
Supervisor Gold?
Tim, do we not do Lake Havasu because Lake Havasu runs its own landfill?
That's correct.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Any other questions? Motion?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Next item, 65. This will be a discussion of possible action. Re-acknowledge the receipt of, and refer to Public Works, a petition requesting that Lance Road from Powerline Road to Randy Ranch Road, Mona Drive from Hackberry Road to Lance Road, Randy Ranch Road from Hackberry Road to Silver Springs Road, and Howard Road from Tammany Hill Road to Silver Springs Road be accepted into the Mojave County road system for regular maintenance, subject to the meeting of all applicable requirements and future board approval. Supervisor Watson, I imagine you know where all those roads are?
Yes, I do, and I have a map. I'd like to make a motion to approve at this point. These roads for improvement are very necessary for that area. There's a lot of travel, and there's a significant amount of new building in that area.
I'll second that. And this is just to refer to Public Works, is that right?
Correct.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. It's been seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No. Aye.
Okay, all vote aye, so it's three, two, motion passes. Item number 66, this will be a discussion of possible action. Re-approve the adoption of Board of Supervisors' Resolution number 2020-128, that Government Way, East Finance Way, and East Port Way, Transport Drive, East Finance Way, and East Port Way, Interstate Way, East Santa Fe, 2.07 miles southwest, and Windrose Lane, East Santa Fe Drive, 2.13 miles southwest, total distance of .50 miles, be accepted in the Mojave County regular maintenance program as paved roads in the Kingman Airport area of Mojave County. And I do know where these roads are. Okay, we have one, one person signed up to, or two people signed up to speak on these items. Okay, we have a Ryler Hunter from Kingman that would like to speak in favor of this item.
Good morning. My first time, so.
Good morning.
I work at Dillon Transportation as the maintenance manager, and that's a small piece of road. Interstate Way is right there in front of us, and I would just greatly appreciate it. We have about 60 trucks and a couple hundred trailers. I employ five people in the shop, and can't tell you how many drivers, but there's a lot, and we're constantly hiring. So, and then we are also the major shipper for American Wood Mart, which is right down the road from us, but I would just greatly appreciate it, and that's all I have.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Gold?
So, sir, this is a paved road?
Uh, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, the next person that would like to speak to us is, I'm not sure I can pronounce his name right, but Singa- Why don't you pronounce it for me? And he's also from Kingman, speaking in favor.
Good morning, council members and chairman. Thank you for having me. I'm here to express my support for item number 66.
Could you give us your name so that I can pronounce it next time?
It's Jengus Eric. The C is like a J.
Great. I would have messed it up then. Thank you. Go ahead.
No problem. I'm here to express my support for item number 66, incorporating a series of roads into the county's road maintenance system. My name is Jengus Eric, and I'm with Import Corner out at the airport on 9,000 East Government Way, which is one of the roads on this measure. We've been at this location for over 25 years and have seen the airport expand and grow. These roads provide access to multiple businesses and will be used for many more years to come. They are productive roads that enable commerce and industry. They're used by the businesses, and more importantly, their customers. We have great leaders fighting for further development of the airport, and the road system will be the veins that enable that. We're not asking for a brand-new road. We're only asking for a scheduled maintenance. A big portion of that investment has already been made, and it would be a great shame, very sad, to see that go away. Thanks. Any questions?
I don't see any. Thank you. So Supervisor Watson, I believe this, these roads we've been looking at to bring into the system anyway, and if I remember right, we wrote a letter in support of the city of Kingman obtaining the grant to pave the roads.
That's correct. Thank you, Chairman Bishop. In discussions with the city of Kingman over a great deal of time to bring those roads up to a standard acceptable by most business owners and travelers, they did receive a grant to improve those roads to county standards, and I'd like to make a motion to approve and the adoption of Board Resolution 2020-128, inclusive of those roads identified.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Discussion.
Supervisor Johnson for discussion. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Lutowski still there?
Yes, he is. And he's heading to the podium.
Thank you. Mr. Lutowski, my question is, these roads, they say have been brought up to standards. How would you rate these roads?
Chairman Bishop, Supervisor Johnson, staff has recently inspected these paved roads. They're short extensions that serve multiple properties from existing county-maintained paved roads. They are in a state of good condition. They've been improved with asphalt and concrete, and are currently free from any undue distresses. So we're in position, noting that the right-of-way is in place, who are recommended acceptance.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions of Mr. Lutowski?
Madam Chairman.
Supervisor Gold?
Mr. Lutowski, these are the roads that were paved from the grant from the Commerce, State Commerce Authority Rural Economic Development Program?
Supervisor Gold, actually, no. The city of Kingman will be pursuing that work for a couple of other roadways that will in turn be brought forward to the board when they are improved to county standards.
Were these roads recently improved, then?
The date of origin is unclear, but the condition of the roadways suggests that they have largely been very sound and are, again, free from any undue distresses.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. It's been seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Item 67, this is a discussion of possible action. Approve the adoption of BOS Resolution number 2020-109, recognizing the existing county-maintained Littlefield Road from Highway 91 South for a length of approximately .2 miles as a paved road for purposes of roadway maintenance in the Littlefield area.
Madam Chairman.
Supervisor Watson.
Identifying the Littlefield area and Littlefield Lane is in District 1. I'd like to make a motion for the approval of the adoption of Board Resolution 2020-109, recognizing the existing county-maintained Littlefield Road.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and second. All those in- All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next item, setting as the Board of Directors for the Golden Valley Improvement District Number 1 of Mojave County, Arizona, be a discussion of possible action. We approve the adoption of GBID Resolution Number 2020-03, and accept request for adjacent property addition to the Golden Valley Improvement District Number 1, as requested by Richard and, well, Nina Shady, in accordance with ARS 48906E, and approve the establishment of new boundaries for the improvement district per ARS 48-906E. Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Supervisor Gold would like to speak to Mr. Lutowski.
Sir, do we have enough water to serve these additional residents in the district?
Chairman Bishop, Supervisor Gold, excellent question. Yes, we are positioned with the Golden Valley Improvement District to serve this parcel that abuts the boundary of the district, and how this parcel will secure their water allocation is the fact that the district still has what's called unassigned water allocations that anyone in the district can purchase. In fact, even if you have a water allocation, you can purchase additional unallocated water allocations, or unassigned water allocations. So, the benefit to this is, these water allocations have been identified through engineering study when the system was originally built out, and such show that we have sufficient capacity, and from a technical standpoint, we do have sufficient capacity to support another residential use.
And we still have enough water left to provide water for future development inside the existing boundaries of the district?
Yes, as it relates, Supervisor Gold, to the overall district, we have been securing through future development fee collections, and what that relates to is actually to sale these unassigned water allocations. They're approximately, and I only can quote offhand, about $5,200 for this unassigned water allocation. So, this individual, if he does desire then to connect to the system, would have to purchase that unassigned water allocation. So, the district themselves, the other property owners, don't bear, you know, any burden of carrying this individual. He's basically paying his fair share of the system development, as well as a future build out to the system to meet demand as the community builds up, builds out.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, we do have a motion on the floor.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion passes. Next item, number 69, this is a discussion of possible action. We receive an update and legal advice from the legal counsel concerning the multijurisdictional opioid litigation. Attorney Esklin, do we need a motion here?
Yes, we do. Mojave County Attorney's Office is recommending the following motion, that the board approve attorney-client privileged actions related to the multijurisdictional opioid litigation, and authorize the county attorney's office, or Keller Rohrbach, to execute documents necessary to conduct settlement negotiations with the Arizona Attorney General. That would be the document that we discussed in executive session.
Okay, thank you. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Next item, this will be a discussion of possible action. We endorse the proclamation declaring the month of October 2020 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Mojave County.
Madam Chairman.
Supervisor Gold.
I move the adoption, item 70.
Should I get a motion?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, we'll now skip down to item 72. This is brought to us by Tammy Ursenbach, the Economic Development Director. This will be a discussion of possible action. We approve the development agreement payment of permitting fees with Meyer Distributing Incorporated, and authorize the chairman to sign the agreement, further direct staff to reimburse Meyer Distributing Incorporated for the payment of permitting fees in the amount of $90,000 in accordance with the development agreement, the payment of which shall come from the Economic Development Fund.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion on the floor. There's a second. Any discussion? Supervisor Gold.
Normally, I would not vote for these kind of things, but apparently, there was a promise made by a former economic development director that, to these folks, that we would do this, and I don't want to pillay bait and switch with them, so I will be voting for this, but do not expect me to vote for these kind of things in the future. Thank you. Also, why on earth is our fees $125,000? I think that's actually what we should be working on, is, that's just a lot of money for, that's two staffers working for a year on a project, and it just seems like that's excessive to me. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. It's been seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, going back to item number 71, this will be a discussion of possible action. Rescind the proclamation signed on March 18, 2020, declaring the emergency in the unincorporated areas of Mojave County to address COVID-19, and direct the county attorney's office to review and update the Mojave County ordinance that provides direction on enacting an emergency proclamation. We do have one person signed up to speak on this, Ms. Royanne Ortiz.
Thank you, Madam.
Okay, Royanne, we have three minutes.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. My last item. I really don't like emergency declarations in Bullhead City. They did an emergency declaration for the purpose of getting money. It wasn't that there was an emergency, but in this case, emergencies have a certain definition to me. When the emergency lasts for nine months, it's no longer an emergency, and I personally don't think, having based on the actions that the mayor in Bullhead City took, based on his authority, to do things that the people didn't like, and guess what? When it came time for the regular council to vote, they voted down what he had done, so they undid what he did. So, I just don't believe that emergency authorization should be a long-term thing, and that one person shouldn't be given total authority to make decisions on their own, that that belongs to the body that we elected, like the entire Board of Supervisors, because all of you are responsible for your own decisions and the actions that you take regarding the people that you serve. So, that's why I approve taking a look at this and doing away with it, because I think, basically, the emergency is no longer an emergency. It's not a problem. Which I have other comments to make, but I have to leave, but I really would like to talk with someone in the future about the kind of information we're getting on this COVID situation. I just don't feel that we're getting enough pertinent information. I mean, when you look at the President of the United States, all of a sudden, he's getting treatments that I've never heard of before, and that apparently, our health director never advised people they could get, and I doubt even the doctors are providing the kind of treatments that he's getting that are available. And, you know, I know of a couple of people who have had COVID-19, tested positive, they sent them home, they suffered for over a month, they got absolutely no treatment whatsoever. You know, it was basically, oh, well, you'll live through it, and they're still suffering today, and it's been like five months. One person had heart problems. She didn't get any treatment either. She went to get a test to find out if she was COVID-19 positive, and guess what? She never got a report back. They lost it. I mean, come on. We need good information. And as a, being in one of the protected, I mean, one of the people that are at risk, I would appreciate more information. Thank you. Sorry.
Thank you very much. Okay, Mr. Esklin, I think I'll let you lead off this conversation on this agenda item.
Sure, I'm certainly able to answer any questions as well, or whatever you wish to do, but just kind of, just a legal background, Arizona revised statutes 26-311 authorizes the mayor of the city or town, or the chairperson of the Board of Supervisors for the unincorporated areas, to declare an emergency, and this isn't the first time the chairman has declared an emergency. Certainly, other times, usually around fire, it's usually related to fires when we've had emergencies declared. But it can only be done if it's by ordinance or resolution, so there has to be an ordinance or resolution in place that would allow the chairperson or the mayor to do that. And I think most counties and cities in Arizona have this in place. And so Mojave County has one. That was a resolution that was passed in 1999, Resolution 99-490, and that resolution allows the emergency proclamation to trigger. So, that's kind of how the two works. The state statute authorizes it, and then the resolution allows our county to do that. And if you look at the resolution, a lot of it mirrors what is stated in 36-311. I believe the item was to see about updating it, to revising it, and it'd be up to the pleasure of the board here if you wish to do that. The resolution is, in my opinion, legal. It's valid. It's consistent with the law. It's allowed by 36-311. There could be some updates to it if you wish. There's a couple of things that I found about it, just reviewing it. There's a misspelled word on there that could be updated. Also, when it was passed, there was like a, there's an order of succession, so if the chairperson is not available, then it would go to the vice chair, and if the vice chair was not available, then it would go to the third chair, I think is the term they use. Well, that was created when there was a three-person board as opposed to a five-person board, so we don't know who that third chair is today, because we have a five-person chair now. So, if you were to just follow, if you were to track the language of this, you know, it says, if the board, if the chairman is unavailable, it goes to the vice chair, and if the vice chair is unavailable, then it goes to the third Board of Supervisor member. Well, we don't know who that is today, because we have five now. We don't know, after the vice chair, we don't know if it's one of the other three available chair, or one of the three available supervisors. So, that can be cleaned up a little bit. That's just taking out that part. And then also, our resolution, it talks about how the chairman can declare, it's for the purposes of the cities, towns, or unincorporated areas in Mojave County. The way I read the statute, it seems pretty clear that the chairperson's only supposed to be doing it for the unincorporated areas and not the cities or towns. So, we could clean up that language, too. And then the board can make any other changes it wishes. That's the board's pleasure, how they wish to draft or amend this resolution. But otherwise, I mean, it's still legal and valid and moving forward. If you do not want to make any changes, you don't have to do that either. The only problem, so to speak, with it would be that third chair issue, but that's what we have right now, currently in place. I can take any other questions or anything else? I don't know what else you want to address.
Okay, and I did check with the County Supervisors Association, and just as a note of interest, I don't believe any of the counties yet have ended their emergency declarations, and they're kind of keeping it as long as the state is in the status that it's in right now with the governor's wishes.
And just to add to that, too, just, I mean, there's been, you know, legal challenges to the emergency proclamations that have, that the governor issued, mostly towards that. I don't know about any local ones, but there was the one that was filed in district court, district court for the District of Arizona. That was challenged early on. The District of Arizona determined that the governor has the authority to issue an emergency proclamation under these circumstances, and it was challenged on the basis of equal protection and substantive due process, and the district court both affirmed those. Then there was also the challenge that was for the, the fitness center. So, there was a fitness centers challenge, and again, that was again, adjusting the constitutionality of it, and again, that was upheld. There's one right now with the bars, and I don't know what the status is. I think that's still being litigated right now. So, that kind of relates to the emergency authority, the emergency powers and stuff like that, but we have that as well.
Madam Chair? Supervisor Jangus.
This is my item. May I say something?
Sure.
Okay, I have a statement. This item is discussing the emergency proclamation this board enacted on March 18, 2020. The three things this does is declare an emergency now exists in the unincorporated areas of Mojave County, declare the chairman of the Mojave County Board of Supervisors shall during such emergency governed by proclamation, and shall have the authority to impose all necessary regulations to preserve the peace and order of the unincorporated areas of the county, which includes, among other things, imposing curfews and closing businesses, and three, declare that during this emergency, political subdivisions have full power to provide mutual aid to any affected area in accordance with local ordinances, resolutions, emergency plans, or agreements therefore. Back in March, the whole world was holding its collective breath. Nobody knew what to expect, and this proclamation was the absolute correct and prudent thing to do. But it is now, over six months later, I believe we are on the other side of this pandemic, and the numbers back me up. At its height, here in Mojave County, from June 27 through July 18, there were 1,590 cases with 68 deaths. Now, from September 23 through October 3, there were 203 cases and one death, with many days of no cases, including yesterday. The reason we were told for shutting down everything was to flatten the curve, to make sure that our hospitals were not overwhelmed. Mojave County did a great job. The hospital stepped up, had overflow plans, and I do not believe that at any time during these past six, seven months, there has been a need to use that plan. There were days and weeks that the hospitals were full, and it was very hard, but our doctors and nurses and hospital staffs were amazing, and they got through it. The last couple of weeks has seen just a few cases coming in and just a trickle of admissions. I believe this emergency proclamation is now unnecessary. I cannot imagine a scenario where the chairman would have to make a decision so important and so timely that they could not wait a few days for the entire board to meet. And please let me reiterate, this has nothing to do with the current chairman. I would ask this to be rescinded, even if I were chairman, because we are an elected five-man board. It is the principle that we have been in an emergency mode for over six months, a fact, I believe, which is unprecedented in our county. At what point do we tell our constituents that we, as a board, as a county, believe that we are not in an emergency anymore? That has been the question from day one. What does success look like? What is our end game? Are we forever going to wait for the state to tell us what to do? The governor himself has said that even if our numbers go up, he's not closing the state again. Our constituents elected us to make these kind of decisions locally. I know there are those on the board who believe the adult thing to do is to follow what the state and the CDC say, but with all due respect, I believe the adult thing to do is to trust our citizens, because we are all adults, capable of making our own health decisions. We need to learn how to live with this virus, because it's not going to go, ever go completely away, and we are losing the trust of our citizens. I believe now's the time to begin discussing our exit strategy, rescind the emergency proclamation, and work quickly towards getting our businesses completely open and thriving again. Thank you.
Madam Chairman.
Supervisor Gold.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Ryan, you're, when you were explaining the ordinance, it brought up an interesting issue, the chairman cannot declare an emergency inside this building, because this building is inside the corporate limits of the city of Kingman.
I think they still could. The, well, no, let me back out a little bit. You're correct. You're correct in the sense that it would be the unincorporated areas, but the board collectively can make a decision about its own property and things. So, you're right, it would be the board that'd have to make the decision within this building.
Interesting.
Yeah.
Thank you. You know, I think it's time that we rescind the emergency and move on. We need to get back to normal. We need to get the economy back to work. If we continue like this, we're going to have a reduced economy, and I think we're doing harm to people. People need to get out and circulate. We just need to, that this is going to be the new norm, that COVID's going to be around, it's going to be a threat. We need to do what we need to do to build up our immune system so that we're not affected by it, and we need to increase public health so that the people with co-morbidity factors get rid of those co-morbidity factors, and they'll be less susceptible to long-term health issues with this COVID. You know, something else is going to come up in the future. We can't stand an emerg, state of emerg- We can't stay in an emerg, state of emergency continuously. And the longer that we stay in it, the less likely that people are going to take it seriously. And I think you've already seen that it is a majority, maybe not a majority, but a large segment of the population does not take this seriously because we've been in a state of emergency for so long and that we've received conflicting information over the period of this. Back in March, we didn't really know what was going on. We have a lot better picture of what's going on today. But I would recommend that we rescind the emergency and return to a normal state. Thank you.
Okay. I don't disagree with returning to normal and ending this emergency declaration, but I would like to know what that means. I mean, what does it mean to the people? Does, does all of this go away and we get back to normal just when we end this declaration of emergency? What happens to the grants that the sheriff's office has received and the health department and different county departments? Does that money get returned back to the state that was, has not been used at the ending of the declaration? I think there's a conversation that definitely needs to, needs to be had. And I'd kind of like to hear from our finance director to find out what it means to the county in, in the sense of, of the cares money. So Coral, could, could you give us your understanding of what does it mean when we end this emergency?
Chairman Bishop and Supervisors. So there's, it is difficult to come to a firm answer whether the funding would be in jeopardy or not. The language of the Arizona CARES Act certainly lends toward the side that if the emergency, if there's no emergency in Mojave County, we have a balance right now of about $1.2 million that we are utilizing to pay for the sheriff's office and the public health department salaries. And the language within the CARES Act itself describes or actually states that this will be, this will occur, we will be able to utilize these funds during the state of an emergency. So if we don't, do not have an emergency, then there may be stipulations that we need to return the balance of those funds. So it wouldn't necessarily be, now, we shouldn't be utilizing those funds unnecessarily if we do not need them. But my understanding is if there's still a termination of emergency locally, that the health department would still be responsible for the duties that's assigned by the governor to do contact tracing and certainly the public safety pieces of that in the sheriff's office, including the jail, continue to have to take precautionary measures and manage their work efforts toward this as well. From the federal funds directly outside of the Arizona pieces, we do have a handful of other grants that you have approved. Some of those, the funds have already been spent. In total, those amount to about $600,000. So I would say that there's obviously no jeopardy for those where the funds, funds have already been used for the PPE and that type of thing. But if there are any outstanding monies, then potentially they could be in jeopardy if we no longer have an emergency here. Some of the money that's left over, I believe, is one recent grant in the sheriff's office. And then also, more recently, you did approve $25,000 for complaint referrals affiliated with the public health department, and that money has not all been utilized yet. The sheriff's office grant most recently was about $35,000 to set up their remote web-based equipment. So I guess it would, it could end up being a legal issue with whether or not those funds are jeopardized if we declare that we do not have an emergency.
And if, could I jump in there, Coral, if I may, and Chairman, if I may?
Sure.
And that's, that's, that's the issue is, well, one, that's one issue of a number of them, but two parts to that. One is, the way, the way that a process worked was, you know, Congress passed the, Congress enacted the law, then Congress then went down to the states, and then the governor then made agreements with all the counties except for two. The large two counties, Maricopa County and Pima County, they were excluded for different reasons, mostly because of their size. So the rest of the counties entered into agreements for that Arizona CARES fund. And, and I have the agreement in front of me. And, and if you look through the agreement, it doesn't specifically state in there, "As a condition precedent to obtaining these monies, you must declare a state of emergency." That's not, it doesn't say that in there. But what it does is, if, if the board removes the, removes the declaration of emergency, it's sending a message to the state that, well, we don't think we're in emergency now, at which point the state may say, well, then you don't need the money, the remaining money that's due, or the money that you have, and you'll have to pay it back. And if you look at, for example, some of the conditions in the agreement, one, one example is, this is one of the conditions that we agreed to. It says, "Any deviation or failure to comply with the purpose and/or conditions of this agreement without prior approval may constitute sufficient reason for the grantor," that's the governor, "to terminate this agreement, revoke the grant, require the return of all spent monies, perform an audit of expended funds, and require the return of any previously spent funds which are deemed to have been spent in violation of the purposes of the agreement." So there is that, what it does is, if you, if you remove the declaration of emergency, it, it increases the risk that they could say, well, we want to, we want some monies back and so forth. I don't know if that will happen or not. Many times when you're assessing whether something's going to happen, you have to say, well, here's the risk. Here's the possibility. The judge may rule this way. The judge may rule that way. And so what we're saying is that, in my, just my legal review of it, removing the, removing the declaration of public emergency puts that as an, as an increased risk, a risk to the county that is something that you need to consider and think about when, when debating this thing. The second thing is that, you know, the, the position, I think, that, that, I think it was Royanne that even said that, oh, we're only doing this for the money. No. It would be our position, at least in the county attorney's office, that, you know, if, if we're doing something just for the money, that wouldn't be an appropriate, acceptable thing. We, we believe that there is a state of emergency. There is a need for the funds because of the emergency. And so we're not, our recommendation is not to do this just to keep the money. No, our recommendation is because there's currently a state of emergency and continue to keep that so that those funds will continue to address the needs that need to be done. And so the county attorney's office, our position is that we, we not rescind the public, not, not rescind the public declaration of emergency. But I certainly recognize the issues that Supervisor Angus and Supervisor Gould have raised here, and it's a good debate. But still, our recommendation would be to not rescind it at this time.
So Ryan, the, the emergency actually is the, the threat of COVID-19, not knowing when, when the numbers are going to go up or down, or whether we're going to get a second wave, you know? And certainly with the, with seeing that our president has contacted COVID, it's, everybody is susceptible to this. But the emergency is the amount of PPE equipment, the amount of health department employees to do skip tracing and, and to do all the work that's necessary during a pandemic such as this, and the sheriff's office extra, extra personnel that they needed. And, you know, it's just, there's, there's a lot of things that are related to this emergency that's not actually health-related per se as much as it is equipment and personnel and PPEs. And, and that's where the emergency, in my view, comes in, is how, how could we pay for all of this with, with the property tax revenue and, and that we receive? I mean, that's the emergency, is we need help from the state or the federal government to put all this together to make us all safe. County Manager.
Madam Chair, Board Members, I speak as the county manager. I realize I'm not one of you, and my thoughts are, I hope, are objective. We have two parts, two issues in front of us. One is the resolution itself that allows this declaration, and the other is the declaration. So as far as the resolution, I think the need for that speaks for itself because it doesn't, it doesn't just deal with COVID, but it also deals with other emergencies such as fires and flooding. And we used that recently during the ridge fire in the Walupai. Usually those are ratified by the board. The, I think, I'm not, I realize I'm not telling you anything you do not know. But the idea here is if there is a need for the chair to act, and there's no time for the board to convene, then the chair will act and the board will ratify that decision. So if you, if you decide to update the current resolution, that is your discretion, and it would be recommended. It is also recommended that the resolution allowing those declarations stay in place. As far as the COVID, you know, I would, I would just echo and build on what you heard from both Attorney Esplin and our finance director, Coral Lloyd, in that is, we have, we are doing great, as Supervisor Angus pointed out. The numbers are far less, both in the cases and in the death numbers. Our fear as staff, my fear also as a county manager, is that a termination of the declaration will signal or will provide a false sense of security that people may think, okay, we do not have an emergency anymore, so we don't have to take the measures that we have taken to get us to this point. The implication for fundings are what you heard from Coral. I think she spoke to that eloquently. There is really an uncertainty remains still. We're, we're doing better with the number, but I'm not sure that we're done with it. And what happened if we do spike and we have terminated this, this declaration of emergency? What do we do then? And how do we then reactivate and secure the, whatever remaining, remaining dollars under this? And then probably the last point that I will make is terminating the declaration will not take away or eliminate the provisions or the requirements that are imposed by the governor statewide declaration. We still have to do contact tracing. We still have to go out and inspect and make sure if we're in the moderate, then those designated businesses are operating correctly and so on. So I, I'm just really personally, and I've started a lot of discussion with our staff, not seeing the benefit of the termination of this declaration and truly concerned that it may bring about some uncertainty and an implication related to those items that I shared with you. And I, I'm not offering this to, excites or to, to interfere with the board business other than to share with you my thoughts based on a lot of discussion that we've had leading up to this board meeting. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Supervisor Angus, go ahead.
Minister Elter has a question. So on one hand, you're saying that if we rescind this, that we may not get the monies or have to give them back. And I'm going to be honest, after six months, we've talked about this so many times, I cannot believe that we don't have a definitive answer on that. And I'm going to ask for our next meeting, that you talk to the state and you find out for sure what the ramifications are if we were to rescind this. So on one hand, you're saying, you know, we might not get the monies, we might. But on the other hand, you're saying we still would have to abide by everything that the governor says we have to do.
Yep.
Okay? So they, those two don't, don't make sense. So you're saying that we have to be in, to, to, we're still going to have to do what the governor says to do, but they may take back the money. So we have absolutely no say in this at all. Is that what you're saying?
Madam Chairman, Supervisor Angus, for your information, we, in preparation for this meeting, we reached out to DEMA. That's, you know who that is, the Department of Emergency Management Agency. They honestly responded with, "We have to check. Nobody has asked us this question yet."
Unbelievable.
So they, they could not, I, just so you know, they couldn't tell us that we would have to refund, but for sure. But they didn't tell us that we could, we get to retain those dollars for sure either. So all I'm saying is, the governor declaration is statewide, and to that end, when it comes to businesses and such, and the contact tracing, we have to do it. And that's my understanding according, and I'll, I'll turn it over to Attorney Esplin in a moment to help us with that. But my understanding of it is, we, we have no choice, but we have to continue to provide those.
If we, if we don't take the money for the complaints, do we have to do the complaints follow-up?
Rat link.
Yes? The rat link, the snitch line?
I, so let me kind of break it down. There's just a bunch of different questions here. So first off, first off, regardless of what decision you make, whether you, whether you rescind the public, public emergency or not, we will have to follow through with what the governor has said. That, that, those executive orders are statewide. They are. And so you still have the same things, so those are going to still be in effect. As to, as to whether we'd have to pay back the monies for the state money, because there's DEMA, that's federal money, and then the state, the state money that's coming through the, the CARES fund that was originally from the feds, we don't know. And I'm, I'm sorry, we just don't. Until you get a definitive answer from the governor, we, we won't know that. I'm, I'm just telling you that there's risk involved. And so you, you look at the contract, I've reviewed the contract, and it doesn't say that. I want to be, I'm giving the board as much information as I can. I'm not playing sides here. I'm just saying, here are the information, and here's the possible ramifications that could occur. And one of those ramifications is, they may say, the governor may say, well, you're not living up to the purposes of this agreement. You've said that this is what's going on, but clearly you don't want our money, so go ahead and give it back to us. That's one ramification. You know, whatever the board takes, then, you know, we'll take those positions and defend those positions as best we can. There's a counterargument to this, to say, hey, you know, we'll still need to continue these monies. There's nothing in, a condition preceded in it, therefore, we won't have to do it, and so we'll defend it that way. But you've just got to be aware that there's a risk here that you're taking. There's an increased risk that's going on.
Madam Chairman.
And I'm sorry, sorry, before I get to that, too, just, there is other, there are other grants as well. We'd have to look at those grants and the grant that you're referring to, the $25,000 grant. I'd have to see if that would put it in jeopardy or not. I haven't looked at that closely enough. It's like 40 something pages. But this one's a little bit shorter and a little bit easier to review. But we'd have to look at those as well, so.
Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. No one's going to claw back the money. I'm a politician. This is a political question. The legislature is looking for a reason to go to battle with the governor. If they were to claw back the money, that would give them the reason to, to go ahead and get their two-thirds majority, call themselves back into special session, take away the governor's emergency powers. They're looking for a reason to do that, but since it's a, it's almost a 50-50 mix in the legislature, this is probably the only thing that Republicans and Democrats could agree on in the legislature, was if you're clawing the money back, they're going to go to war, they're going to go to war for us. Two, the federals are never going to claw back the money. The Democrats want to send out even more money. That's the same, it's the same thing in Washington. They are not going to claw the money back. That's all there is to it. They couldn't justify it. They're trying to buy votes, and so they're not going to give up votes by clawing the money back. So the monies, it doesn't matter, it's got no clawback provision in there. So the governor would be, then be acting on his own executive authority to pull the money back. It ain't going to happen, folks.
And I will, I
It ain't going to happen.
No, I
What they would, how it would really play out is what they would do, they would send us a nasty letter saying, declare your emergency again, or we're going to do it. Whether they're really going to do it or not, I doubt it. I don't thi, I don't think they have the votes. The governor's on thin ice as it is. The legislature comes back into session anyway, coming after the first of the year.
Madam Chair? Madam Chair, I want to ask the attorney a question, too.
Well, let's, let's let Ryan address what Supervisor Gould said, and then I'll recognize you.
No, I, I respect Supervisor Gould's position, and I don't know what will happen in terms of whether the clawback or not. But I will say, from, just from a legal standpoint, this is a clawback. But I will say, from, just from a legal standpoint, this is a clawback clause. I mean, this, I mean, that, what I read is, any deviation or failure to comply with the purposes and/or conditions of this agreement without prior approval may constitute sufficient reason for the grant or to terminate this agreement, so on, so on. And then it says, and require the return of any previously spent funds which are deemed to have been spent in violation of the purposes. So there is a clause in there.
Well, to me, that sounds like a clawback for not using the money for the appropriate use.
Correct.
Not for rescinding our emergency. We might already be under threat of that anyway, because we supplanted money to the Sheriff's Department, that it's not being used for COVID.
I, I would.
You can't, you can't fund the whole Sheriff's Department and claim it's all COVID, because that's not what the guys are doing. They're out there enforcing the law.
As far as that is concerned, I disagree respectfully, because the, the specific direction from the governor's office was for the payment of the Sheriff's Department and the public worth, public health department salaries. I mean, those, these monies were specifically designed to go directly to those two departments. And, and I, I get your supplanting argument, I think you're right, personally, but the governor specifically said, in, in the instructions, this is not supplanting. Whether that's not or not, that's, that's for them, but it specifically says that in there. So this is not supplanting, and it was specifically earmarked for Sheriff's Department and, or law enforcement and the public, the public health.
Okay, if the governor says so.
Supervisor Angus, go ahead.
I've tangled with governors before.
In any of these grant applications, contracts, does it say, only if you're in a state of emergency?
Most likely not. This doesn't say it, but it, but again, you're just, you're increasing the risk. You are. That's, and make, I'm, I'm advising you, could I be wrong? Absolutely. I'm wrong quite often, but I'm telling you, there is that increased risk.
To wait before I make a motion to get this information that, are we having a Thursday meeting this week? And I will do research as well, to find out, because I doubt that every county, every city in the whole United States has declared an emergency in their, I could be wrong, like, like our attorney says, but, you know, when you do something like this, I do not think they're going to get as small as that. And I don't think it's going to put anything in jeopardy. But again, and I, I, you know, we're accused of this, and Royanne said it, that this is all about money, and that's what it's going to look like when it's in the paper tomorrow. It's all about money. And if we don't need it, if we are on this downside, and we have fewer things, and we're being told we don't need the PPE from the hospitals, then, you know, again, it's grants, but it's all our money. It's your money and your money and my money. So it's not money that falls from the sky. So I would hope every county who feels that they don't need it, I mean, there have been states that have, you know, said, no thank you, to federal money. It's the right thing to do, and if we don't need it, that would be the right thing to do. So I'll wait till, I'll wait till Thursday, and hopefully we'll have more information, and maybe that will make people on this board more, and myself, more comfortable doing that.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Johnson, go ahead.
Thank you. Whether we have the emergency order or not, it, it makes no difference. It's not changing any of the requirements, like the attorney said. We get the funding and the partnering with the feds and the state by enacting our, our emergency order. The federal government, through the White House, has extended their order until the elect, or until the new president takes office, which is what, January 22nd. I think that if, if you want to do away with this, then we give all the money back. I have no problem with that. But otherwise, we keep the ordinance in place, or the emergency order in place, and we can make a motion to go and, you know, clean up the requirements, but that's the only way I see it. I don't know why we need to go till Thursday.
Okay, Supervisor Johnson, I agree with you. I think the language on the emergency declaration could definitely use the cleanup on the items that Attorney Asplin pointed out, but, you know, if we ended this declaration immediately today, the citizens of Mojave County would not have any more freedom from restrictions than they have right now. And, and taking a chance on, on how this is going to interact with, with the governor's executive orders, I don't see any changes in those. We're still going to have to go out and, and do what we're doing today with the Health I, I just don't see any advantage to ending this declaration, other than it shows a victory for those that are really opposed to the, the change in their lifestyle. And if, if this emergency declaration could go away and all of those businesses and families that have been harmed, if that, that could go away as well, I, I just don't see where it's going to make any decision for, for those people any, any better. I mean, it's, it is what it is, and until the governor ends his emergency declaration, or until the end of this contract is over, which Attorney Asplin, I think is the end of December, at the end of December, I would say, depending on how COVID is then, if it's still nice and stable, then we, we do it at that time. Supervisor Watson.
Thank you, Chairman Bishop. My past experiences over the years have always been goal-oriented, and I'm looking for the end of the tunnel, the goalpost, the ninth inning or the fourth quarter. Where do we arrive at a decision or a parameter of which we end or we renew? And every emergency that I've been involved in over the years has either come to a conclusion or you make a decision to stop it. This particular COVID virus evidently has no end. There could be a second wave, there could be an increase of new infections. But I'm, I'm looking for, and I'm striving to find somebody that can answer that question. What are the acceptable guidelines? What are the, what are the goals? Where are we trying to get to? When can we say this is over, and when do we start life normal again? Is it no more cases, zero cases, which is probably never going to be the case? Is it zero deaths? That's probably never going to be the case either. But we do need to find and insist from our elected officials, maybe further up the chain. We need to start asking those folks, what are the goals? What do we, are, are we trying to achieve? And that's my only comment. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Johnson.
Thank you. I, I think the Supervisor Watson's question, I, I think they're looking towards a vaccine, which is supposedly right over the horizon. I think when they get a handle on it, because we have so many people in the high-risk area that if, at least if a vaccine comes in, I think they, think they can manage it by then. That, that would be the only answer I would ask Supervisor Watson.
Well, I would then, there's a lot of things that we want answers to, so I'd like to make a motion that we continue this till Thursday, this discussion, and hopefully we'll have, after six months, better information about money. You know, I was with our elected officials over the weekend at the state, and they're asking the same questions that we're asking, you know, when is this going to be over? And they said that we have the right, the autonomy and the authority to make decisions locally. I'm just telling you what they said. So my thinking was, this would be the first step towards, like Supervisor Watson said, resuming normalcy, because it's, it's never going to be, we're going to have to learn to live. We're going to have to learn how we're going to live with this virus. And if this is how we want to live, then, you know, let's, let's make that decision. I'm not sure. So that's my motion, to continue this item about rescinding the emergency proclamation till Thursday.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, motion passes, till Thursday. Okay, the last and final agenda item, number 73, is mid-discussional possible action, an update from the County Public Health Director to the Board of Supervisors regarding recent issues, actions, events, and county responses regarding COVID-19 updates, and taking any necessary actions based upon those updates. We do have one person that's signed up to speak. Denise, if you don't mind, I'll, I'll let Hades Manning speak.
Okay.
Oh, all right.
Okay. We answered her question. Great, okay. Ms. Manning says we've answered her question, so she no longer wishes to speak, so. So we have our Public Health Director, Denise Burley, at the podium. And I'll turn the floor over to you, Denise.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. I don't have a lot to cover today, but I know there's probably some questions that people would like to have answered, so I'll try my best to do that as well. We've had 3,923 cases to date in Mojave County, 217 deaths, and 3,538 of those individuals have recovered. Average age of cases and average age of deaths have not changed much, as you can see. They sit around 47.7 for cases and 75.8 for deaths. And our case fatality rate has hovered around that 6% for the, for the last several months. So I know the question came up just in the previous conversation, and the term unprecedented, I think, fits this very uniquely compared to a lot of other emergencies that we've experienced. A fire has an end date, basically, when it's put out. Hurricanes go through and natural disasters occur, and then people recover from those. This virus is very insidious and tends to rear its ugly head and return, and we've seen that in other parts of the country. And while I recognize that our numbers currently are low, and I'm very thankful for that, and I'm happy for that outcome, our goal is also to keep them there. And that's where we need the public's help, and we need your help, of course, in looking ahead to prevent, basically, a repeat experience of the cases and deaths that we experienced in June and July, and the severe strain that we encountered on our hospital and healthcare system. And knowing that this pandemic is still circulating in our community, of how we prevent that from occurring, in lieu of, money aside, just our actions. And what actions are we taking? You know, I see emergency declarations, Supervisor Gould, I understand your point. You know, people get tired of emergencies. And so it's how do we keep people's awareness up about the fact that this virus is still out there? Does the emergency declaration help with that? I tend to think it does, but I'm not in that position to vote on that, I just wanted to provide my, my thoughts. At this point, when we talk about an end game, we are talking about a vaccine or some long-term preventive tool and solution to the virus itself. In lieu of that, we continue to see, we'll continue to see cases here and there, and possibly an increase in cases, a second wave, however you want to term it. When we have vaccine available, we do have preventive tools that let, at that rate, for people to use, choose to use at that point, to prevent the virus from becoming infected with the virus. So at this point, there are a number of people who are unable to protect themselves from the virus, and that's where we fall into play here, is the public health role. And so our job is to try to protect the public health, and especially those who, due to disease, state, or other reasons, are unable to protect themselves. So that's the role. I don't know if you have any questions on that or thoughts.
Madam Chairman.
Supervisor Gould.
We hear talk of this second wave concept, and, and I think that partially is intended to scare people. When you lock down, you, and reduce the amount of people that come into contact with each other, you suppress the number of people that are going to get that virus. And the reason that we did that was so that we would not overwhelm our healthcare. So when you open back up, you're going to get an increase in the number of cases. But I don't know that this is going to be a tidal wave or a stone in a pond.
Agreed.
And that's the, but I think they talk about the second wave as some kind of a tsunami. And it, you don't really know what it's going to be. If you look at Sweden, Sweden handled it totally different than how we handled it. They, they went up, the, the upside of their curve was steeper, the backside was steeper, and now they're down at the bottom, where they just kind of run across the bottom of the board. So they've reached herd immunity, and that, and so then they're back to just the small amount of cases. They're back down to about the same number of cases that we have now. And if you look at Sweden, it's, I think Arizona might even be bigger than, population than Sweden. So when, when the governor decides that we're not going to suppress people and make them stay in, you're going to get a slight, you're going to get an increase. That's the, the real question is, is that going to be, you know, the, the wave, the stone in the puddle, or is it going to be a tsunami? I don't think it's going to be a tsunami, personally. I think it's, you're going to see a slight increase. The metrics that we use, I think, are biased because they're based on testing. And I, and I don't think that that's how they should have looked at it, because what, you can game that by running people with no symptoms through the testing and run your numbers down, which is essentially what they did to meet the White House metrics back in April. Eventually, we got to open it back up and, and go. There's certain people like me that aren't going to take a vaccine, because I don't trust the, the vaccine manufacturer and the rest of market. People that might be at higher risk than me might be interested in doing that, but I'm not interested in doing it. But you got to open back up at some point, and if you want to reach herd immunity, otherwise we're going to, if you continue to stay hunkered down, eventually you're going to, it might be years before you ever reach herd immunity. You might be extending the whole thing by not opening the public up, exposing the people that can take it, and they then become immune, if that's actually what happens, because we're not 100% sure. But if you don't open back up at some point, you're never going to reach that point. It's going to go on indefinitely. But it's, eventually, we got to call it quits and move on. You know, we can't stay, we can't stay under, under the thumb of the government. We're not a, we're not a, a type of people that like to be under other people's control. We were birthed out of rebellion, we threw off a king, we came here because of a religious persecution. We're just not a people that are, are apt to, to lay down, and I just don't know how much longer people are going to lay down. And that's, that's all rhetorical, and you don't really need to comment. If you want to comment about the herd immunity thing, that's, that's fine, but it's more or less just a statement from me.
Certainly, Supervisor Gould. Yeah, the herd immunity, I believe, is still under research, and I think it's an unknown just how much immunity we build up as a result of either the incremental, small incremental effects that we get, not effects, but the experiences, the, there's a word. You know how it just kind of just flies right out? Our exposure. Thank you. You know I was going to get it. So, you know, those incremental exposures we get from being around people, even with a mask on, that we can benefit from. And those are helpful. I also am not, you know, the, the increase in testing that's available out in the community, either to A, set aside those that are asymptomatic and catch those individuals, which is a fairly high percent, or testing those individuals quickly who are symptomatic, so we can get them quarantined and isolated for the time. But the herd immunity piece, I think, is still in question, how much you, how much a person builds up, whether or not it's 70%. Is it based on their exposure level, if they had a mild case, if they had a moderate case, and so on? So I, I think the research is still out to the point where we can't really definitively say that someone is fully protected. And Sweden paid a fairly big cost in deaths for their choice of direction. So yes, they benefited on some level, but the long-term benefits yet, have yet to be determined.
Okay.
One more thing, Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. You know, they're correlating it to low vitamin D levels also, which is interesting. Being in Arizona and working outside, I would think that I would have excessive vitamin D, and I was always concerned, what does that do to you? But actually, I talked to my doctor, and I talked to a doctor at urgent care, and this was about before the COVID thing, and they said, actually, Arizonans are deficient in vitamin D. vitamin D. And it makes sense, if you think about it, because when we go outside, we wear a hat, we put sunscreen on, we do everything we can to get that sun off of us, and we do our best to stay out of the sun. You know, our kids, our kids are more pale than, you know, kids from a colder area, which is interesting. I had my in-laws question whether my kids ever went outside, and I said, they try not to go outside in the summertime. But it's interesting that we, people would think we would have a good level of vitamin D, and we're outly, we do not. Thank you.
Very interesting. And I didn't have any other updates other than to say that we'll have some information on Thursday, at the Thursday meeting, about the vaccine and some of the progress around planning for vaccine availability in our community.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Angus.
Is it time to talk about the complaint line?
Sure.
I don't know about the rest of the board, but I have been receiving call after call. I even had a text while we've been sitting here. From a business owner who is just outraged by how many times he's been visited. These complaints are anonymous. We talked about this at the last meeting. It could be the same person. It could be a competitor. It could be an ex-wife. It could be anything. So we have to go in and do our thing. Even if, even if the health department visited a restaurant on Monday, everything looked great, and then you get another complaint on Wednesday, you have to go back.
We do, we consider it a new complaint.
You consider it a new complaint?
That's correct.
So at the very least, can we at least give the health department some discretion on their own? I mean, if they see one restaurant or one gym, you know, over and over and over, and every time they go, everything is perfect, after a while, it's just harassment. And I mean, how much more are we going to torture our businesses? I mean, honestly, they're trying so hard to stay open. You know, you look at a restaurant, and then the health department comes in in the middle of the day, and I don't blame your department, you do what you got to do, but what's it look like to the community? That's already a little nervous. I mean, after a while, if people go into a restaurant and they don't like what they see, they should turn around and leave, right? Instead of picking up a phone and anonymously. So my two suggestions, and again, I don't know if this is legally possible, is to give the health department some discretion on if, how many times they got to go back and visit a restaurant, or gym, or bar, or whatever. Or two, when these tips come in, people have to give their names. Doesn't mean you're going to tell, you know, it would be, it will be confidential through the department, but at some point, this, all the burden is on the businesses. And some of them, I don't know what they're going to do. They're just at their wits' end, and they're hating us. They see it as all our fault. And I am sure that your staff is not too happy about it either.
Well, I think there's definitely been some more concern, I think, from staff in that they've spent a lot of time building up these relationships, especially with restaurants. This has been a, a goal is always work with a business, not against them, and try to find ways to assist them in meeting whatever requirements are out there. And we will continue to operate that way anyway, and we do with the COVID complaints as well. So I think the other side of that, of course, is how the business owners, of course, feel towards them when they go in of, they just go in with a very professional attitude and approach, but sometimes that's not always reciprocated back on them, because they're there for a job, but that's, it's not a job that people really are, they're not really, they don't really want them there. I mean, they feel like they're operating within the governor's executive order, and most are. If they aren't, they're very minor infractions, and we've been able to work with that business. And the second visit comes along, and most people have complied and taken the necessary steps. So, but it is difficult, yes.
Okay, Supervisor Watson.
I was going to make a comment for solution, but I think I probably better not, having to do with identifying those anonymous people, maybe competitors or ex-wives or those types. So I will not make that suggestion.
Supervisor Johnson, do you have anything?
No, Madam Chair. The only thing I would say is, if there's a complaint that comes in, we've all had businesses that we've owned, and I always welcome somebody to come over and check on me, because he didn't have any complaints. I'm not seeing why people are whining about it.
Okay. Supervisor Angus.
Because when our health department goes in, Supervisor Johnson, it's, they're just not looking for a mask being off. Once they're in the business, as I understand, they have a list of like 15 things they have to do each and every time. So people are walking around a restaurant with their things, and, you know, it's like, it's torture. And people are really getting mad. So again, Ryan, what are the odds of giving the health department some discretion if they were out of business two days ago? And again, when people complain, it's just a snapshot in time. They're there, they see something, they leave. They do a complaint, it could be two days later that we're there. It just, it doesn't make sense, the urgency of it.
I mean, it's up to the board how the direction you wish to give to the health department, but I frankly, I, I'll just tell you my own experience. I was with my colleague on Friday afternoon, and it was the end of the day, and we were talking about the complaints, because it's difficult. You're in a difficult situation. You've got the position that you're taking, you've got the health department that's just, you know, doing their business. And she pointed out to me the number of cases that they've handled, and the perspective that I got was that, I'm impressed with businesses. They're doing it. They're following it. I don't think anybody wants these things. Nobody does. But businesses are doing it, and I want to give kudos to the business communities here because they're trying. There's, there'll be one or two outliers who are flailing, you know, just totally disregarding the law, but for the most part, people are following it and they're doing it. I would recommend you stay the course where we're at. I'm hoping, I'm more hoping that we continue to keep on that minimal range of spread and everything else, so that we stay with that. Because if we stay with that, I think we're going to have less problems. So from a legal standpoint, I can see where it's going, and I think they're doing a good job, and I'm just more hoping that we can just get rid of this virus and move on and so forth.
Ain't going to happen.
So.
Supervisor Gould.
I'll bet that on our own complaint line, we could say that we need to get, take your name for your complaint. On the state line, we probably have no choice over that, and I believe more of the calls were coming in over the state line than were coming in to our own line, but that might just be my perspective.
You know, I might need to check on that. Ron?
And if we start taking names, then the, gosh, I'm trying to think of the woman that, from Bewitched, that used to look out the window and, the nosy neighbor. They'll just switch to the state line and be making their calls in on the state line.
Supervisor Johnson, go ahead.
Supervisor Johnson, go ahead. I think the attorney has said that we can't even ask people their names and call to the public. We have special rules for different things. We had to at least keep consistent.
So let me make sure I understand correctly. We asked for names and called the public, so therefore we should also ask for names when somebody gives a complaint? Is that what you're asking?
No, I think you said that we could ask for names, but they don't have to give them to us. I'm just saying, there's a lot of times that people don't give the county names, and now all of a sudden, we're going to require names?
Okay. I understand, I see what you're saying. So no, you're right. I mean, somebody can say, well, I'm not going to give my name, and I don't think, I don't think we could force them to give our, give them their name. I don't think that would be, I don't think that'd be wise to do that.
Well, that's why I, excuse me, Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
That's why I think the best way, something we can start with, is giving that discretion to the health department. If they feel, I mean, you're taking, you're talking to people, maybe it's the same voice or it's the same complaint about the same institution, same restaurant, that, you know, your employees are smart, you know, and they know their job, to say, you know, we were just there two days ago, so let's just, you know, give it a rest.
I think where we would be concerned is that, in the discretion, we just don't want to be too subjective in that approach either. In other words, I can, I absolutely respect that position, and we would like to have that discretion, but I also am concerned that without sort of a timeframe window, you know, if we get three complaints in the same week, do we just investigate the one on the Monday? Say we get it on Monday, we go out, we do our inspection, that inspection comes back clean, we close that particular case. If we get another one on Wednesday, we don't necessarily automatically follow up, but maybe the following week, if we get another complaint. That's the window, I guess I'm looking for, is at what point, you know, is it the egregiousness of the complaint that we get? Is it, is there something else there that we would use, and criteria we would use to decide whether or not to go out or not go out?
Madam Chair. Denise, what kind of complaints are coming in? Is it just masks? Is it, is it pretty much probably masks and social distancing, right?
That's correct. Yeah, that's, those are the two primary, absolutely. You know, businesses operating outside of their capacity limits, the social distancing inside the restaurant or the locate the business, it's not always a restaurant, but inside the facility, and then wearing of masks, yes.
And if you go in, you instruct them, right? First step, education, you tell them. So then, two days later, someone says the same, the same thing. You don't know what time period they're, you don't say, when did you, do you say, when did you witness this?
Ron, do we collect information about that?
We do locally, but the state doesn't give us that information.
Right, okay. So if they do call into our, our EH department or division, they do ask those questions, but the state does not necessarily ask those.
Do you have to report back to the state?
Yes. We have to, we have a report back to them about the complaints that we followed up with, yes.
Well, I just think this whole anonymous snitching is un-American, and I think it's leading to a bad, bad, bad place.
Madam Chairman.
Supervisor Gould.
Denise, do we have to report that to the state because we took the $25,000 enforcement grant?
That's correct.
The other question is, is there some law that says that our health inspectors, if they're going in to check for masks, distancing, and capacity, they're running through their whole restaurant check? They're checking the walk-ins and reach-ins and all that stuff?
They are not. So we have a separate checklist for the COVID complaints.
Okay, so when they get a COVID complaint, if they've been in that restaurant within whatever the rotation, the time is, they're just doing the COVID, they're not going in the kitchen and doing all that stuff?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
That is correct.
Okay.
Can I clarify something? Did you say that we have to do it because we took that, what, was it $25,000 grant?
No, so the report back to the state is what, we need to report back on our actions based on the monies that they gave us.
So if we gave it back, we wouldn't have to do that?
We wouldn't have to report back to the state, the number of inspections and so forth, but we still would fall under the executive order and enforcement of the executive order per Title 36.
So the money isn't related to the action?
No, not necessarily, no.
Okay, so Denise, do you?
Sorry.
Do you have the money in your budget without the CARES Act money to comply with the executive orders?
It depends. It depends on the number of complaints we get and the time it takes staff to travel to and complete the inspections, and then also do and perform their regular normal duties in ensuring that we're not falling behind on restaurant inspections and other complaint inspections that we would normally do.
So without the CARES money, would you have to lay off employees to stay within your budget?
That's a very good question. I think in terms of our case investigators that were hired, office specialists, data entry people, and the coordinator, those were positions that we were looking at using the CARES Act money for. So we don't, we have those additional funds in our budget to pay for.
That would be good to know at Thursday's meeting.
Okay, we can do that. Absolutely.
Madam Chairman.
Supervisor Gould.
We might also want to know what have, if we, if we're tracking, and Coral could probably give us this, we're tracking actual COVID-related expenses, and what's our running total on that spending? I think at one time, it was a month or six weeks ago, it was like $100,000 on actual COVID expenses, but that may be greater at this time. Thank you.
Okay, I'm sure Coral can provide that on Thursday.
Okay. I'll just leave you on this. Our President of the United States, Donald J. Trump, just left Walter Reed, and he said, "Don't be afraid of COVID."
Did he go home, or did he just cruise around the block waving at supporters?
No, no, he's gone back to the White House.
Okay.
So he's over and he's healed, right? I don't know if he's healed, but he's going back to the White House. No matter how nice, it's never good to be in a hospital too long. Even if it's the presidential suite.
Whenever possible, recoup at home. Okay, any other comments or questions? Okay, hearing none, this meeting's adjourned.